It is 6:00 PM on September 16th, Tuesday, September 16th. I'm calling this Lacey City Council meeting to order. Council members Dunning and Stedman are attending remotely, but all their council here are present. And if you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Niskali Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. Can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. So first up on our approved agenda is public recognitions and presentations. The Lacey Youth Council, welcome Sadie and Youth Council.
Good evening, Council. I'm Sadie Seglin, the Lacey Youth Council staff liaison. And tonight, we are doing something new. Last week, Tuesday before last at our Youth Council meeting, the Youth Council held their annual elections. And that is to vote amongst themselves for the role of youth mayor, deputy mayor, and clerk, as well as our advisory body reps. We also, this year, have a social media coordinator, which is really exciting. And later on tonight's agenda, you will all review the recommended advisory board representative appointments. So I thought it would be fun to have the Youth Council come up and share with you all why they ran for their leadership role and why they were interested in serving on these advisory boards. So with that, I will let the Lacey Youth Council members introduce themselves.
Good evening, Council. My name is Yor Trin, and I'm from River Ridge High School. And I'm really excited to share on why I was interested to be the youth mayor this year. As a senior and ASP secretary at my school, I've learned that leadership is an incredible thing to have when working with other people. I've learned new skills and that taking on a role to take initiative is super important. I've also learned that people's opinions and thoughts really matter, especially recognizing the perspectives of the youth. That's why that led to my passion of advocacy. I really do believe that is an important thing to recognize. And I also had the great honor to serve last year as well. I've met a ton of new people and met a lot of people through this community and through the different events that we've done. I've also developed a lot of new skills with public speaking and a bunch of stuff. And I can't wait to learn more this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Isabella Valerio. I'm a junior from River Ridge High School, and I am our deputy mayor. Last term, I served as our clerk, so I was excited to kind of advance and get more experience from this new position. And I enjoy being involved in our community in general. I have a lot of volunteer experience, and I want to advocate for different groups and gain more collaboration within our team. And I'm hoping to do that through the position. Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, sorry. Good evening, Council. My name is Michaela Pennington. I'm a senior at River Ridge this year, and I am the clerk for the Lacey Youth City Council this year. One thing I'm really excited to do is not only get to know my peers on the board, but get to know the council members as well. I'm a big leadership and I'm a big leadership role taker. I really enjoy being involved in the community, and I like to hear what other people have to say. Kind of going off of what Dior said, big on advocacy. I love hearing what other people like have to say, and I love getting feedback and putting that out and making a better change. And I'm really excited for the change that the Lacey Youth Council is going to make this year. Thank you.
Hey there, Council. My name is Matthew Mendick, and I am a senior at Timberline High School. I'm super interested in joining as a social media coordinator because I believe that to reach the voice of the youth, the best possible way is through the use of social media. And I bet you that if you go into a high school, 90%, maybe even more, will have social media and like chronically like online. So I'll say definitely the use of social media through getting the Lacey and to get the youth voice out there to be heard, because many people don't have access to just like going into, say, a meeting like this and getting their information there. Maybe they're too shy or some other obstacles that get in their way into getting their information out to the city. And I believe I do have the qualifications to really get the youth voice out through the use of social media, because I've done many video projects, including one with the amazing Mayor Ryder, where we did a video on tourism in Washington and how it impacted it, as well as I was able to work with Habitat for Humanity and creating a video for them, which was really good, because a lot of people were able to see the impact, their donations, and the impact of these nonprofits that have really had on these other people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I was pretty sure you were going to be the coordinator there, so congratulations.
Hey, Council. My name is Arien. I'm a senior at Timberline High School, and I want to be part of the Parks and Recreation Board. I was on it last year, and I'm really passionate for leadership. I hold many roles. I was on the Youth Council last year. I've been serving as class president at my school for two years. And I enjoyed my time on the Parks Board last year, and I'm excited to be back on it.
You were a great voice. I had a lot of good feedback last year, so keep up the good work.
Good evening, Council. My name is Avini Kumar, and I'm a senior at Timberline High School. I'm choosing to be the representative to the Historical Commission. I have a really strong passion for history and learning about, and I'm interested in learning about the history of Lacey as well. And I've previously served as the library board representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Luca Frilic, and I've been recommended to be the library board representative. This is my second year in the Youth Council, and being the library board representative would be a great way for me to continue my experience working with the city as youth. My family uses the library a lot, and it would be interesting to learn more about the behinds of scenes of running it. And I also think the services such as computers and printers that the library provides are important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Zhang, and I am a junior at North Thurston High School. I have been recommended to be the Human Services Commission representative, and I'm interested in this position, because when I first heard that this commission could go around helping people, I knew that that was something that aligned with what I want to do in life. And having the opportunity to help recognize and focus those efforts is something that I'm really excited about.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Yuig. I'm a junior at North Thurston High School, and I've been recommended to be the representative on the Commission on Equity Board. I've lived in Lacey my entire life, and I volunteered for the youth, the elderly, and the less fortunate people in our community. I know it can be done to improve their lives in Lacey. In fact, I'm hoping to start a fundraiser at my school that will raise money for students that are unable to afford those really expensive lab materials and those that are unable to get other resources for their school. Hopefully, with my appointment, I will be able to further this project and start many more in the future.
Thank you. Very impressive. Well, thank you, Youth Council. We're expecting great things out of you, and we know it's going to happen, so keep up the great work. See ya. Thank you. So next up on our approved agenda is proclamations. And we have a proclamation for Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. We'll start with Councilmember Dunning.
The Bureau of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas during Hispanic and Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month, we honor the rich heritage of the Hispanic and Latinx community and celebrate their countless achievements and...
Whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, calling upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs and...
Whereas the city recognizes and celebrates the diversity of community members that this month commemorates, honors, and pays tribute to individuals who speak Spanish, who are descendants of, from Spanish-speaking countries, are descendants from over 26 Latin American countries, and who may speak a variety of different languages. And we recognize the Latinx identity also encompasses people in indigenous, Black and African, Asian, and queer communities and...
Whereas Washington has grown more diverse over the past decade, with the Hispanic community now representing 14.2% of Washingtonians, with the Hispanic community in Lacey representing 12% of the population and...
Whereas Hispanic and Latinx community members have made immeasurable contributions to the advancement of the United States and the city of Lacey, including but not limited to serving in their armed forces, elected officials, public servants, essential workers, agricultural workers, teachers, business owners, and culture and creative industry leaders and...
Whereas 2025 honors the theme collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future, highlighting the importance of celebrating the rich cultural traditions that shape Hispanic identity while looking forward to the promise of future generations and...
Now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to hereby recognize September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month in Lacey, and encourage our community to celebrate the strengths that emerge from diversity and participate in activities to learn about our Hispanic and Latinx communities, their histories, and contributions to our society and our society. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
And David, come pick you up.
Buenas noches. Good evening. My name is David Puente. I'm a board member of Cielo. We're a local nonprofit. Before I get going, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Ryder and the Council for the recognition to allowing Cielo to come and say a few words. What I'd like to do is just to talk a little bit about our organization. We're a nonprofit. We're a mission that promotes community self-sufficiency and leadership for Latina, indigenous, and immigrant communities in the South Puget Sound. We strive to provide opportunities for our community to acquire skills, resources, and to actively participate in community. Our goal is to be the hub of the community where people of all generations can come together, celebrate cultures, traditions, and be a safe place where there is respect, dignity, and for us to create a strong bond and relationship with the community, and also to work with our allies. Our focus, three general areas, is education, counseling, and advocacy. We're currently working through some challenging times right now. We have a smaller number of staff. We're going to continue to focus in the community. We believe that the work within our community is going to continue, and we're going to be doing great work with partnerships like the City of Lacey. And I just want to say thank you to the Council again for recognizing the community in Washington State and here in the City of Lacey, and to allowing Cielo to come in and be able to talk a little bit about our organization and what it is that we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Keep up all the great work.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Next, we have a public comment. We had one written public comment. We didn't have anyone sign in, but is there anyone here wishing to address the Council? Seeing none, then let's go on to our next agenda item, which is resolutions. And the first resolutions is 1172, the body worn camera fees.
Good evening and thank you, Council and staff, for having me back to discuss the implementation of a body worn video redaction fee. I'm Anna McBee, the record supervisor for the Lacey Police Department. In 2024, I made a brief presentation to the Council regarding the police department's body worn camera program. I discussed exemptions specific to body worn videos, the effect of the program's implementation on record staff workload, and potential fees. Just four weeks ago, I was invited back to a work session and presented more details regarding the program as it relates to public records. A cost analysis was presented, showing the estimated cost for staff time to redact body worn videos is 90 cents per minute. This cost was calculated by adding the salary and benefits of a step one police record specialist, the annual license fee for the software, then divided by average minutes per month. The details of this calculation are noted in a staff report provided to you for review. I am back tonight to request the Council's review and adoption of Resolution 1172. This resolution will allow the police department to charge for actual time spent making redactions of body worn videos. As noted in the staff report, there are specific requesters that would be exempt from these fees per RCW 4256240. Thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Can I get a motion, please? Crap. Sorry. I'll throw it out there. I move that we adopt Resolution 1172 to establish a body worn camera redaction fee for staff time associated with redacting body worn video footage.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Obviously, we had quite a few conversations about this, and obviously, we're not talking about a huge fiscal note. In this case, you know, we're only talking about maybe, you know, $1,500 in fees annually. But I think what we're really trying to do here is make sure that we're being fair to our community and that we don't see these circumstances where people are requesting body worn cameras, footage, you know, for maybe their own personal gain or for other, you know, reasons. And so when you put a fee on that, I think it can, you know, discourage some people from sort of taking advantage of our, the fact that we have cameras and, you know, prevent some of that from happening. Obviously, anyone who's in an accident where, you know, who's directly affected, they're exempt from this, and they have access to this footage. But, you know, what we're really trying to do is be fair for all of our staff time and everything else, that we don't have people just asking for, you know, hours and hours of footage, and it's not, you know, doesn't cost anything for them. So that was really the idea behind this. Councilmember?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what the mayor is saying, that this seems like a reasonable step to take. And I think all of us are very proud to live in a state where we have such transparent laws related to public records, and we want to make sure that the public knows what's happening and the actions that government is taking, and its work to retain those records, to review those records when requests come in, and to provide those records to requesters in the community. And so this step that we're taking, this resolution, in part recognizes that this is work. It takes time. It takes staff resources, and so very supportive of this step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, then it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 1172 to establish a body worn camera redaction fee. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you. So next up under resolution is Resolution 1173 for permit fee update. Terry?
I'll start, but if we have questions, Terry can jump in here, too. But good evening, Council. Vanessa Dolby, Community Economic Development Director. So before you is Resolution 1173, which would adopt a new permit fee schedule correcting errors and adding clarifications. The amendments of the fee schedule were discussed on the August 12th work session, and they identify four primary changes. One, correction of errors. Two, the addition of permit processes that are listed in our code but were not reflected in the fee schedule. Three was removal of permit processes from the fee schedule that are not reflected in our code. And then fourth was amendments to provide clarity and consistency to the resolution as it relates to when fees are charged and how rate increases are applied. So staff does recommend that a council approve Resolution 1173, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Move to adopt Resolution 1173 amending the building fee schedule and land use fee schedule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Obviously, we've talked about this quite a bit, too.
Yeah. Last work session.
Okay. Seeing none, then it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 1173 amending the building fee schedule and the land use fee schedule. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Well, that was easy.
Yep. And then we'll keep rolling. It's now around to ordinances. Ordinance 1682, the adoption of the International Series of Codes. Back to Vanessa.
All right. One more from me. So good evening. This is for consideration of ordinance 1682, which would formally adopt the 2021 International Series of Building Codes consistent with Washington Administrative Code Title 51, which requires that local jurisdictions adopt and enforce the state building code by local ordinance. So staff does recommend that the Council adopt ordinance 1682.
Before we go there, I actually maybe want to make an amendment to this motion. We have talked, this has come before us in the past, and this is one of those ordinances that, you know, it goes through a process, it comes down to the city. We really have no choice but to adopt this. We couldn't not adopt this ordinance. And so I'm hoping we can make a motion that says that we will approve this ordinance in any future, you know, yeah, code updates in the future along those lines, because this is one of those things that it's, it's sort of like kind of a waste of our time when we know, you know, it has to become, you know, it has to be passed no matter what. Like, we can't not pass this.
So I'm, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm well aware of Council's direction, and Council had directed Community and Economic Development Staff to take just those steps. They had that language proposed, and I'm the one that said, hey, let's pump the brakes here a little bit. We do have 2024 building code updates that are going to be coming right around the corner. We're not quite sure when they're going to be here, and it's at that time that I'm going to be looking into adding the language that Council's referring to now. That could be in a few months, but it's likely probably going to be in another year or so, and maybe Vanessa or Terry have a little more specific information on that. But the reason I kind of wanted to pump the brakes on that is although Council is required to adopt these codes, you know, as they're, you know, approved by the state, the Council does have some discretion in amending certain areas of them, and Council has done that previously. And what I want to ensure, we could have gone forward with these amendments now, but I want to kind of play around with the language and get it all really consistent, so it's just going to be that much easier going forward. And given that, this is, this next step is right around the corner, I just suggested that we wait and do that at that time. So it would be one more.
You're right. This is the minimum codes that we have to adopt. We could go stricter, right, in some circumstances. We couldn't go less. And so that would be the only circumstance where we would do some changes in the future. But that could still come before us. I guess you're going to have to get your language right.
It's the, you're right, Mayor, and it's the language that is currently utilized in the LMC right now. And it, different sections for different codes use different language. And I just wanted to take the time to really get all of that consistent and uniform before we took that next step. So I'm afraid I'm to blame for this having to happen again.
Go ahead.
Just the same comment I make every time this comes before us. I think it is absurd that we vote on something that we have no say in.
Yeah.
The state mandates this. It's going to be whether we vote on it or we don't, it's going to be adopted. There's absolutely no reason for this Council to have to take action on it, and the state needs to change that. And because of that, I'm going to abstain and will not vote on this.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, then, I'll look forward to that future language. In the meantime, can I get a motion?
I would move that we approve ordinance 1682 adopting the 2021 International Series of Building Codes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would say just, you know, because what David has, you know, he has caution, so I have caution. I side with our Council on this, so I'll be voting.
I mean, I'm right there with you, Councilmember Greenstein, but I think we can figure out a way to move this forward, and if there's something within the codes that we want to look at a little bit differently, it'll still allow us to do that. But we've been saying this for many years, like these pass-through ordinances should just sort of pass through if we don't, if we don't really have a say in it. Go ahead.
I just appreciate what you're saying, Andy, but I would, when this comes back with Dave's blessing, I just want to make sure that he addresses the question of whether this ties the hands of future councils, and so that we make sure that, you know, we're minimizing the paperwork we have to do, but also not, you know, having unforeseen consequences.
I do think that, you know, and we'll talk about this more in the future, but I do think there's any time where we want to take a look at our building codes and do something, you know, that's not just the standard. We, I think we have the opportunity to have that come forward. And so I don't know if it's going to completely tie the hands of future councils, because like I said, if we didn't adopt this, it would still come into effect. And so I don't see anything on that, you know, along those sides, how we're...
Anyway.
Yeah, it's tied, our hands have been tied, because this is state law, so...
This is just us acknowledging that the floor is moving.
Yeah.
We could go higher than the floor. We could create more stringent requirements, but we are acknowledging that the floor has moved.
Yes.
And in many cases, we've already been ahead of these codes, and we've often, well, I won't say oftentimes, but a couple of times we have made codes that are even stricter than this, like our tree canopy coverage and so on and so on. So I understand, you know, why, kind of why it needs to come in front of us, but at the same time, it could be a consent item.
Well, and yeah, well, and especially on the building code side of things. I really wish we actually had more of a conversation that we're having, because sometimes I feel these codes come down, and they're making it more expensive to do some of the things that we're trying to do in our communities, and, you know, that, it's a longer conversation. But I wish cities had a bigger role at the table when it comes to this, and I guess you have to get on the building codes panel and all that stuff. But anyway, that's another conversation. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We've had some discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve ordinance 1682 adopting the 2021 International Series of Building Codes signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed and one abstention? Okay, so it passes. Next up is the next ordinance, the 1683, the 2025 budget amendments. Troy. Right? Nope, Chelsea.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. My name is Chelsea Yarwood, and I'm currently serving as the Acting Financial Services Manager. Tonight, I'm presenting the proposed ordinance for our second 2025 budget amendment. We discussed the major components at the August 26th work session. I'm going to touch on a few highlights just as a way of review, and then also provide some information on some items that changed in between time. So the first area to highlight is grants and contributions. The city is proud to have received valuable grant funding from our local, state, and federal partners, and we are equally grateful for the strong support of our community partners whose contributions are helping bring important city projects to life. A big area where that's the case is in parks. So Rainier Vista Park improvements are being funded through RCO state grant funds, Thurston Pickleball Club contributions, and Park Foundation contributions. And the William A. Bush Park Playground replacement is being funded by RCO grant funds, which is state-funded, as well as Gateway Rotary contributions. We also have the Community Development Block Grant, which is federal funding through HUD to fund CDBG programs and awards. We have the Highway Planning and Construction, which is federal grant funds for the College and 16th Avenue right-of-way acquisition. And in police, we have equipment and software... And in police, we have equipment and software for a digital forensic analyst position purchase that is being funded through contributions from the Squawly Tribe as well as Seattle Police Department. And lastly, the Veteran Services have, we have two years' worth of lease costs that are being contributed through, from Thurston County. The next area I want to highlight is asset additions. So this amendment enables the city to move forward with acquiring select new assets, investing in essential equipment, and targeted property acquisitions presents a proactive approach to not only support current operations, but also to position the city for improved community services. So acquisitions specific to this amendment is the park's maintenance equipment for Cuyo Park Phase 1A, the property to enhance public workshop operations, chlorine generator at the A-Tech facility, and the Lot Mullen Road reclaimed water line. Another area to highlight is capital projects. Capital projects can be unpredictable due to shifting project requirements, material costs, and scheduling variables. While one of our current projects has come in higher projected costs than originally anticipated, another is progressing ahead of schedule, demonstrating both the challenges and opportunities inherent in managing large-scale initiatives. The Woodland Creek Community Park Bridge Replacement requires a contingency due to the bids coming in higher than anticipated. And then the College Street Extension paving project is actually ahead of schedule, so we're moving funds into 2025 to create that budget capacity. Lastly, I want to talk about two new budget request items that have happened since the work session. The first one is purchasing of water meters in anticipation of that meter replacement project we've talked about. And then there's also an amendment for Joint Animal Services. That request was already approved by their board. It's just kind of a budget formality for us to have it in ours as well. And that's for veterinary services line items in their budget, which is set to increase by around $80,000. And just to back up, the meter replacements that we put in the budget amendment, since we haven't talked about that one yet, we're expecting about $1.3 million worth of meter Additional details related to all of these budget adjustments have been provided in the packet information. And so with that, I can answer any questions, but I also recommend adopting ordinance 1683 to amend the 2025 budget.
I would recommend that we adopt ordinance 1683 amending the 2025 budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to make a quick comment about how lucky we are as a community to have three Rotary Clubs and two Lions Clubs right here in Lacey who contribute just tremendously to our community. You know, the Gateway Club that's donating for the Bush Park. We also have, I know, the Hawks Prairie Club and the Lacey Club both donating for some things that are going to happen at the, at the new Greg Cujo Park. So, I mean, these organizations do a lot to enhance our community, and I just wanted to thank them.
Go ahead.
We're purchasing, you know, new meters on the order of $1.3 million. How long will it take us to actually put those meters out? Like, how long is it going to take to install the meters? Do we have any idea?
That's the next step, is we just got the estimates and options to what we look at for a project. And so we'll be working with Public Works and Utility Billing to scope out what that looks like. I know from the information provided that the meters themselves have a four- to six-week lead time in ordering, but also there's a, in the winter time, that there's maybe a little bit longer as well. And I don't know if Scott or Troy, if you had anything to add to what that looks like in terms of a project, but it may be something of a 12-month to 18-month timeframe total.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I think Rick pretty much covered that. But we're talking about 12,000 meters, so it's going to take some time.
It'll be a phased project.
It is. And we have a couple different options we're looking at, and something in between, everything from hiring our own temporary staff to do that versus hiring outside help or contracting for that help. And there's various timeframes for both of those options. And like I said, we're looking at an option in between as well. But, yeah, it's going to take a little while, so keep at it.
Thank you.
So the only thing I didn't see was if the, the cost of 1.3, did that include the labor?
No, that's just the cost of the meters.
It didn't. That's just for the cost of the meters. Okay, that's why I was looking for that, and I didn't see that.
Yeah.
So I had the question on the, for the Joint Animal Services. So obviously, the $80,000 amendment is our portion for the City of Lacey. The other jurisdictions are receiving this as well, and have we heard from them that they're all going to pay the increase?
We haven't heard from them. This wasn't something that was out in our last meeting that I remember. So that's something that's going to be a follow-up with Sarah, unless City Manager has some additional information on that.
My only concern is, is, you know, what if the other jurisdictions don't?
This is not ours. We have to include it just because they're in our budget process, kind of like as a fund. But it's really their budget amendment, where it's just a formality for us. So the City of Lacey is not funding that. It's the Joint Animal Services. It's like their reserves that are going to end up funding that.
Got it.
So it's a Jazzcom budget that's incorporated, we document within our budget, but it's Jazzcom-specific.
Yes.
So our last Jazzcom meeting, this wasn't included.
Okay. Got it.
Is that because we're the fiscal agent for Jazzcom?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, I usually, I don't remember seeing Jazzcom stuff like that in our budget amendments like this, but.
We did have one budget amendment in our last meeting that was for our LNI, because our rating had changed.
That's right.
If I could just jump in, this is actually specific to vet care and medicine, and it's because of the increase in the number of animals that we're seeing, and also the increase in cost for the medical care associated with those animals.
I would put a plug in that if anybody needs a kitten, Jazzcom has kittens, and they need people to adopt them. I adopted a kitten. There were a ton when I went there. There were like 15 or 16 kittens that were ready for adoption. So I invite you all to visit Jazzcom.
What's up with all the new kittens in our community? Is there, is there a track?
I adopted a dog.
Huh. Anyway, okay.
It's a kitty cam. Everybody wants to get a cameo.
Yeah. So also, I mentioned it earlier, that we usually haven't seen like the smaller budget amendments like we've seen in this circumstance, where we've seen, oh, it's 5,000, 6,000. You know, we usually, in the past, have seen those as sort of one lump, you know, and we reported it out on sort of the bigger budget amendments. But it was really interesting to see in this breakdown, you know, each of the projects where, you know, it requires a budget amendment to finish it off of, you know, $5,000. We just, we haven't gone to that level of detail, even though it's been buried in the report before. I've just, I've not seen it listed out like this before, but it's some interesting information.
Thank you, City Manager, for indulging me.
Well, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Then there's been, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1683 amending the 2025 budget, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I need a little more granular view.
Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're on to the mayor's report, and this is sort of somewhat of a formality. Earlier, we heard the youth council and their internal process of selecting their mayor and deputy mayor. But then the second role of that is adding them to the different boards and commissions. And so there is a Table A in our, in the report. And so it is my motion that we recommend, based on Table A, the 2025, 2026 recommended youth council board representatives.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I just want to say how impressed I am with this, our youth council. And it just seems like every year, you know, we're getting just such amazing people willing, you know, youth in our community willing to step up and serve. And I'm just really, I'm really looking forward to this year and what they're going to be able to accomplish, so.
One of the things that I was hoping in terms of the youth councils, now that we've had a couple years of president, vice, mayor, deputy mayor, and clerk, I didn't, we haven't had any follow-up with them, the ones that have moved on, gone to college. And I was hoping that maybe one day we could schedule a follow-up with them and bring them in.
Well, you know, I have been in touch with several youth council members over the year, but the where are they now thing, I think that's something maybe we can, well, let me, let me reach out to city and see if, you know, we can have maybe a time where our existing youth council can maybe reach out to past youth councils. If we still have, if we have their information and see if we can, you know, work on that as well and get a report back.
We can see what we can do.
Yeah. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to recommend the youth, to the youth advisory boards based on Table A, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. And now we're on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have one report out tonight. I would like to invite Sue Phailish up to the lectern. Sue's our recreational, Recreation Manager, and she's going to give us a recap of all the events and activities that happened in our parks and programs this summer. So, Sue?
Good evening. My name's Sue Phailish, and I'm the Recreation Manager for the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation. Thank you very much, council members, for having us here. I feel like I was here just a few weeks ago, and I think I was. But it's always exciting to talk about all of the good things and everything that our staff has done, not only in the community with the programs, but with the parks and the facilities. So here's a little recap, not everything we've done, but a brief recap of what our summer was like. Just a little quick summary, and then we'll touch on them each a little bit differently. We held 23 events, over 50,000 attendees. On the program side, we offered 378 different offerings with nearly 3,200 participants in our community recreation classes. The Regional Athletic Complex hosted over 25 tournaments with 750 teams. And that's just, we're just talking the summer months for those. And the rentals between the Jacob Smith House and the Community Center, we had 64 private banquets and 77 meetings. Things are getting definitely back up to what they were prior to COVID, which is really great to see. And it always helps to have our volunteers out there. We had 161 community volunteers, which had 1,133 hours over the summer. Or actually, that was for quarter two, which is the spring, because we don't have our quarter summer numbers yet. Special events. Everybody knows, one of our favorite ones is the fireworks spectacular. We did have a record-breaking year with that this year. I think there was over 40,000 people that was on the count with the, with the cell phone counts, which is huge. There was close to 2,000 from over 50 miles away, and 1,000 from out of state. Our Lacey in Tune was also another huge success. They did add a second show on Wednesdays. We had around 6,500 folks. And this was the 31st year celebrating the free music and entertainment in the parks. Play in the Park is another great special event. It's one that travels around to different parks, trying to hit all the different areas of the community. We had them at Rainier Vista, we had them at The Rack, we had them at Meridian, we had them at Wonderwood. We had everything from, we had steel drum parties, we had an aerial show, we had a circus, we had a ventriloquist. And the most popular was Old McDabbie's Petting Zoo. The tenants for the five-week series is estimated around 1,300 people. And here's a few more pictures for you. Kind of some, some of the fun events, that was the petting zoo and Play in the Park and the drums. Obviously, it was, we had a great, one of the movies we did was Wicked, and we had folks there, and kids were dressing up in the 3rd of July. Aquatics, always a big seller, especially in the summer. They offer programs from, well, it usually was 3 to 12. This year, he offered a new, some new programs. He offered the Parent taught program, along with teen swim lessons and adult swim lessons. They were another ones. Scott has done a fabulous job of getting new programs, getting new people, and getting some really good staff. We were having trouble collecting staff there for a while, and he's been a real asset. His enthusiasm and his ability to connect with these kids has been great. So our aquatics programs have once again been extremely successful. We had 478 swim lessons were taught just this summer. And we had, which amounts to, I guess, what does he has down here, 55, 178 different skill combinations that were taught to all these kids. So these youth that are young adults that are teaching these classes, they're really truly teaching these skills. They're not just showing up and, you know, it's a real, it's a real skill. So they're doing a great job. Liberty Recreation, pretty much are normal. We do the summer fun tour, day camp, we had Playground Pals, the Teen Adventure Camp, Teen Biking to Destinations, which was a new program this year. Camp Cascadia, which we do in combination with Tumwater and Olympia. We all get together and go to the camp, and they bring kids from their jurisdictions. And it's really a fun time for kids to meet other individuals out there. And the Bricks for Kids and the art programs. Here's just some of the fun pictures from some of the hikes, some of the day camps. We do, you know, super sitter classes. We do pretty much everything. Art, that's one of the pictures, is from the biking. And the one with the water was from out at Camp Cascadia. They had a water obstacle course for the kids to play and entertain on. Summer reservations, the facilities were full. The Lacey Depot, the Rainier Vista, Rack, and Woodland Creek shelters are huge success. They collected over $41,000 in rental fees for just from June to August, and we're not even through yet. The Jacob Smith House in the Community Center, the summer of these facilities were rented 89 out of the 92 days from either agencies hosting trainings, meetings, or families hosting milestone celebrations. We have started doing a lot, some of our recreation classes there, too, and so they've been filling up quite a bit of that time, which is another great use for our facilities. There's a picture, ah, go back. There's a picture of our, oh, I'm not doing really good with this, am I? Nice picture of our facilities. The Regional Athletic Complex, always a fun one to talk about. Hosted, like I said, he had 40, 25 to 40 tournaments. He was going back from January. We had over 401 different soccer reservations, 520 baseball and softball reservations. We offered, for the first, or again, offer, we helped host for the first time the USL home matches for the men's and women's soccer. We did touch rugby, which was never been, that was a big national tournament we did this last, last month. And we had, it was called Gaelic Games, which is a rendition of rugby, and we had their tournament here as well. In the park area, we always do our host of the Polynesian Festival, which was a success, Juneteenth, and several youth sports camps. Here's some fun pictures. That upper one is, was the touch rugby. There were teams from all over the place. We had, put it out in, in one of our Lacey deals. Lot of fun to see a lot of different people come from all over and praise our facility. And not a lot of that is a good rendition for Scott and his crew out there. Julie and those guys do a fabulous job keeping that facility in pristine shape. Couldn't do anything without their staff. Youth sports. We had our, we had T-ball, we had all kinds of youth sports, skyhawks camps, everything from flag football to soccer to basketball. We have little mom and taught classes. That's our picture of there. And then on to our volunteers. For the second quarter, we had 161 volunteers. They served, like I said, 100, 1,133 hours. Our youth sports had 48 volunteers, serving 3,563 hours. Those youth sports ones are the youth coaches, and they're instrumental to our programs. And we would not be able to do anything without them. And we are going to be having, if any of the councilors, and we are having the volunteer appreciation at Rainier Vista Park. It'll be September 25th. We've got sandwiches, we're just doing a, you know, thank you very much for all the time and everything that you've done to help support us. Special Events had 50 volunteers, which served 446 hours. Here's some of the pictures of some of the volunteers doing the stuff they've done. Another quick one to highlight, some of the fun things that the museum has been doing. Though they're trying real hard, and we're just about ready to open up the new site, but they've been doing, Felicia and Erin have been really active. They had a scavenger hunt, which was, we did it as a staff, just to see how it worked. It was so much fun. Saw places that I never, never knew we actually had in Lacey, and I've been here for a lot of years. They do rock painting, they do their history talks, so. So, though they're not really set in a place, they're still being very busy and still doing a lot for the community. And that's it. Yep.
How, how are you, my friend?
I am wonderful. How are you?
Great, great. Be sure to thank all the staff for all they did throughout the year. But speaking of museum, I was on, you know, we, we, we had the proclamation on, for Hispanic. And, and we're talking about Gateway Rotary. I was meeting a couple old members of mine that I served on Rotary with at Equal Latin and I was driving by the museum and noticed that they were moving stuff in. We're just, I was kind of wondering what the timeframe was that of the, with the move in and the opening and all that. Are we progressing good? Is it opening soon?
We are progressing good. A lot of it is getting a lot of the stuff from the Russell House over and stuff that's at City Hall back over to the Russell House. I would like to say it in the next month or two, it'll be open. I want to say that because my staff needs the office space. So, I, I have kind of a different way to look at it. But they've been doing a really, they've been doing a great job and.
I, I was meeting with Patrick Davidson and Troy Kirby and they were asking me and I didn't know, so, and you brought up the museum and so.
Yeah.
Figured I'd ask.
Well, yeah.
If anybody hasn't seen either.
We're really, really looking forward to that because finally we can buy start buying some Lacey swag.
Have you seen those sweatshirts?
No, I haven't, but I know they're going to start a whole new.
City of Lacey nineteen sixty.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to it because, you know, it's like, you know, keep people coming from out of town and you're always looking for, you know, Lacey stuff to, to buy them. And it's been tough to find that stuff, so we're looking for that. So, a couple of things. A couple of years ago, we had a economic impact study that was done for the regional athletic complex. And they basically do it based on how many tournaments come in and how many people are in the tournaments and they be able to give us a number on that. Do, do we have any latest numbers on what the?
I, I don't have them with me, but yes, Melissa from the Experience of Beyond gives them to us every quarter and then we have a, a big one at the end. And if I had my lodging tax application, I could tell you exactly what they are.
Yeah.
Because we provide those in there, so.
Okay. I would, I would love to see what that is. I, I had someone.
Twenty-four was something around twelve thousand or twelve million.
Yeah, I know it's a big number. I just haven't, someone asked me the other day and I was like, ah, I have that, I can, I think I can track that down, but I don't have it on me.
There's two things, the economic impact study, which is a deeper dive in what the overall positive and negative impacts of that. But then, but we're talking about is the data reports of number of visits to the Rack and how many are out of town visits, how many are local.
And then I know they take all the information, they can put it into a formula to see what the actual economic impact of, of the Rack was for that year. So, yeah, if you can give me that information, I will, I want to pass it on to someone who, who asked me. Yeah, and I guess the other, I guess that's it. Anyway, keep up the, the great work. This is all of our events.
Staff's work.
Yeah, all of our great events in Lacey that makes Lacey so amazing.
Put all the credit, so. All right. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So, now we're on to council reports. I'm up first and I do have one quick report. The Transstation Policy Board met last Wednesday, September tenth, bright and early. And this was a, a, one of our quarterly in-person meetings, although a lot of people still chose to attend remotely. We didn't have too much on there that for, for significance here in, in Lacey. We did have a, a amendment to the, the R, R tip. The county received a couple of grants. And in order to be able to go forward with those grants, that those projects have to be in the, the R tip. And we were able to do that and so they were going to go through, go through those, those projects. We did see the, the draft regional R tip update for the next four years. So, every year, we look four years ahead and all the jurisdictions try to come up with all the projects they're going to be doing and the financial constraints and, and everything else that's on them. And because you, again, need to be in the R tip for, for funding purposes. Of course, then we end up having all these amendments because things come up all the time. But we did get a chance to look at all the, the projects that we know about that are, are being planned for the next four years that are coming from each jurisdiction's tips, their, their individual tips. So, that goes into the R tip. We've also had a little bit of discussion. We've been down a, a business representative on, on the TPB for quite a long time, going way back to, it was actually Dave Lawson, who we know here was on our planning commission and for a long time. He stepped down quite a while ago and we haven't backfilled his position and there's a couple of other appointments that need to happen. And so, as the chair, where I pulled together a, a committee and we're going to, you know, finally try to get the policy board back up to full, full strength. And then we also, the other major thing we, we discussed was the Martin Way Crossing Strategy. And of course, this council just had an update from TRBC on that. And so, I won't go into that. But that is my report. Next up is the Deputy Mayor.
Just one quick report. LTAC met on September fourth. We welcomed a new commissioner, Annie Choi Reinhardt, who is, manages the Candle Suites just across College Street on Third Avenue, the one that backs up to I five. In finance, our cash balance to start the year was nine oh nine, four oh eight. Of, of course, that includes some of the, the dollars that are held back for the Rack field replacement. It's five hundred K and a couple of months' worth of reserves and, and, and our cash balance at the end of that is two sixty-seven, four twenty. So, year-to-date collections are at two eighty-one, zero three one, which represents up through July of this year. So, so, well, up until July. So, so basically, we double that and that'll give us the projected amount that we are able to, to use for this, this funding cycle. So, that number comes out to about five eighty-seven and some change. The, we did go over the extension that will take us into September nineteenth, which is this Friday. You know, and as council looks at reviewing strategies for income and expenses, we, we kind of went into, you know, hey, reviewing, you know, some of the policies and updates. We had a, kind of an extensive presentation on the purpose of, of LTAC dollars and how they're supposed to be spent in the, the fifty-mile range and the, and the things that we need to be adhering to. But one of the, the policies that we updated this year was a preparatory expense for up to forty percent. So, if you, because a lot of expenses are, have, have gone up twenty, thirty, fifty, a hundred percent, the, the applicants who, who get approved can use up to forty percent of their ask for preparatory expenses like pipe and drape, insurance costs primarily is the one thing that most of the applicants said have really increased and it kind of could prevent them from having their event if they can't cover that upfront. We also agreed that the, it was presented to us that, you know, hey, you know, the, we, we're using more full-time employee staff hours for this, this committee. And, and we were asked to maybe give five percent. We voted that five percent would be a fair number to, for city admin staff not to exceed forty thousand dollars. So, we, we approved that. We also talked about award minimums in some cases because the paperwork can be intensive. Some of the, the awardees aren't able to actually use their full award or use their less than, you know, five thousand. You know, maybe they, maybe they got four thousand, but in the end, it's like with, they don't have enough people to actually do the paperwork. So, they didn't get to use their dollars. And so, we, we kind of agreed that five thousand as a minimum would be fair to, to set so that we don't end up funding events that never happen because they couldn't afford to do the paperwork or whatever the case may be. So, that was just kind of another thing that we did. We also talked about the maximum benefit or award for events that happen outside of the City of Lacey or the UGA. There are events that happen outside of the city in the UGA that directly benefit the City of Lacey and benefit heads and beds in the City of Lacey. But we are kind of talking about, you know, let's limit that to twenty-five thousand. And they need to really demonstrate that, hey, we are putting heads and beds in the City of Lacey. So, that was one of the Rubric crush questions. You know, how many heads and beds are you, are you putting from fifty miles or greater into the City of Lacey? We did update the Rubric a little bit. We consolidated tourist attraction and marketing categories and increased the weight point so that we could recognize applicants who are demonstrating a fifty-mile-plus range. And the same thing happened for community and business collaboration. If you guys are, you know, if, if your entity is, you know, collaborating with the community and the business, businesses in this community, we're giving a little bit stronger of a weight point for, for, for that collaboration. As we get into reviewing applications and, and deciding on funding, there are some interview considerations that we wanted to, to address. One of them is, you know, you can't bring any swag and give it to the committee. You, five miles, I mean, five slides maximum for your presentation, no video. And a five-minute Q and A time for the committee to ask questions about you and your event that you want to put on. I, right now, we have about eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in asks. And that's before the two-week extension. Of that eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, about four hundred and thirty-six is coming from the city. That covers the Rack, the Lacey Museum, the Makerspace, Lacey Chamber, plus the admin fee. And then there's a few other things that we, we really like supporting, which is the fireworks, the Lacey in Tune, the Spring Fun Fair and the cultural celebration, Lacey Cultural Celebration. So, that, you know, would come out of our total budget of five eighty-seven, which represents about seventy-four percent. So, the rest would be dispersed amongst the, the rest, the rest of the, the applicants so far. There's about twenty other applicants outside of the, the city's asks. And our next meeting is, I believe, the nineteenth? Twenty-fifth? Okay, twenty-fifth it is. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenstein.
I have a few reports tonight. This one, I'm a little bit late-giving, so I apologize. But this is Thurston County Medic One EMS, Emergency Medical Services. Meeting took place on August twenty-eighth. And just a few things from this one. The long-awaited new medic units that we've been waiting for, for, it feels like ever now, have actually started to arrive. The first two are actually in Tacoma right now, getting some final touches. Two more on their way that we should have here in the next month or so. And the final two should be here by the end of the year. So, Medic One will be fully up to date and have new vehicles, replacing some vehicles that are way past their expected lifespan. Also, have had, been dealing with some staffing challenges at EMS. Two of the four positions that have been open are now filled. They just hired those two people. And we are now out advertising, looking for the two training positions, which will fill out the, the staff. And then last, you've heard me talk a little bit in the past about the Suboxone program that EMS has taken on, where they're actually, while out in the field, attending to people who are, who have overdosed, offering them Suboxone, which is a drug to help them stay off of drugs at that point. It goes along with counseling and it's a pretty elaborate program, but they've actually had fourteen patients now accept the Suboxone. So, we're actually seeing some really good results in the trial period. We'll have more information, follow-up on those fourteen and however many additional have happened since. But interestingly enough, the, we've had a dramatic decline in overdose calls, actually. So, we were averaging over twenty a week and they're now averaging more like five a week. So, not quite sure why yet. There's some work going on behind the scenes right now to try to figure out what's actually changed and why we're having so many. They think part of it is the twenty was spiked by some bad fentanyl that was out there, that was in some drugs that people didn't know they were getting fentanyl. So, that drove a lot of addiction, a lot of overdoses that were unexpected. So, they think part of it is that that's been cleaned up. But I'll have more on that as we get more information. Thurston nine-one-one met on September third and just a couple of things there. You've heard me again talk now for about two years about the DuPont site for one of the antenna, radio antennas that we were really struggling to get through all the process with the Department of Defense, who actually owns the property. Finally done and construction is underway. So, that project should be done by November and we'll have that tower up and running, which will be a really big help for the system. We need that tower to help with the radio coverage. Non-member agency agreements are almost complete and the phone system replacement is all scheduled to go live on November third. So, we'll have a complete new phone system going live on November third. And lastly, they've run, are underway right now with their fourth hiring academy, which should put out four new telecommunications. The fifth academy is, is already scheduled and they're recruiting for that. And the anticipation is that by year's end, we will actually fully staffed in TCOM, which would be the first time in several years that we've gotten there. What's that? And then lastly, I want to kind of talk a little bit about one where we actually haven't had a meeting and that's the Opioid Abatement Council that I was appointed to. So, we had a couple of meetings early on, but the last three meetings in a row have been canceled for the Opioid Abatement Council. And I mentioned some frustration with that to some of you in conversation. But I've had some communication back and forth with the county on this topic. And it seems that the holdup right now is the ILA. So, inter-local agreement that we need to sign between the cities and the county, which to our understanding was pretty much complete several months ago and just needed signature. The county has kind of taken a step back and due to some of their budget issues, they're looking at whether the money they have involved in, in the opioid abatement money that came from those federal lawsuits, whether that money can be used to offset some of the social service things that they're already doing for addiction treatment before they're ready to sign the ILA and actually join our money together with the cities and the county to actually get it out into the community. And because of that, the money has been basically sitting in the bank and we're unfortunately not using that money right now to help anyone. And that's been my frustration is I think the money should be out in the community. I don't know, Rick wants to add anything to that?
Not much on the status. I got the same similar communication through email from the, the county manager on that the, they're looking at the ILA in, in light of the, some of the, some of the budgetary issues that are going on. One thing I do want to kind of just remind the council as well, because we've been focused on this new ILA, which is an amendment. And we actually have a signed existing ILA in place that was established, I want to say, well, like a day, probably about eighteen months ago, roughly, under the overall One Washington settlement agreement. And that ILA creates the formation of the Opioid Abatement Council. And in that, it identifies that each jurisdiction has control over their own settlement dollars, but have the opportunity to pool it. But that would require a secondary ILA in how you pool those dollars. But the old purpose of the Opioid Abatement Council is to be a reporting mechanism as well, certifying up through to the larger One Washington agreement that the opioid dollars that we expense out are, are, are being distributed in accordance with the settlement agreements. So, we do have an existing ILA that's established of that Opioid Abatement Council and we do have the ability to work within that ILA. The reasons for the amendment was, was looking at how do you pool those dollars as, as a starting point? And if, if the partners that make up the Opioid Abatement Council couldn't agree on a, a one regional project, they still had the opportunity to take their dollars back and use how they deem appropriately at their local jurisdictional level. So, I just want to kind of frame that because sometimes we're having councilions in these Opioid Abatement Council meetings, but there's still other work to be done by that council in setting up for identifying potential regional partner, projects and partnerships in funding those, those efforts. So.
The only thing I would add to that is, at, at the first couple of meetings that we did have, everyone at the table, so that would be all of the jurisdiction's representatives and conversation with our own council as well. We all agree conceptually that the best way to spend this money for the greatest benefit to our community is to pull the money. None of us individually as jurisdictions, is it enough money to do anything major in, in the, in the community? But together, there's actually enough there to hopefully do something that can help a lot of people. So, everyone's in agreement on that's the best use. But again, we're just kind of in that holdup. But I know that the mayor and city manager are going to be having some conversations with our neighboring jurisdictions who are also involved and we'll get some more clarity there because at some point, we as a council will have to make some decisions as to, do we move forward maybe with the other cities, even if the county isn't ready to go? Or even on our own with the money to get it out into the community to actually start. on our own with the money to get it out into the community to actually start helping some people?
Yeah, this Friday, the three cities and the county are going to meet our regularly scheduled meeting, and I'm hoping to get a commitment. You know, if the county wants to go alone, that's 100% their prerogative, but, you know, we need to know that sooner than later, because there's still the opioid abatement council. It doesn't change anything. You know, if they want to take their part of their money and do something else with it, they have that prerogative under the existing ILA to do that. But the other cities can still now maybe, you know, join our dollars, or continue to talk about what, you know, what are the projects out there, what's the best use of this money. But there's definitely work to be done regardless of, you know, before the money is spent. You need to identify what you want to spend it on. And so I'm hoping to get a commitment from the county, which way they're going to go, if they're going to want to stay a part of the, you know, to do the amendment to ILA and pull all the dollars together, or if they want to go alone, that's, again, they can make that decision. But we need to know either way, and hopefully we'll get that commitment on Friday, or soon after that.
Great. Well, that is my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thurston County Law and Justice Council meets on Thursday. Other than that, I have another report.
Councilmember Cox?
I have one report tonight, out of the September 10th meeting of the Lacey-Olympia Tom Water Thurston Clean Water Alliance, affectionately known as LOT. We had a really engaging report from Chris Peters, who is chair of the Squawson Island Tribe, about their tribal history. I learned a lot of things that I had not known. And this is part of leadership of LOT is making a big investment this year in building strong local relationships with local governments, including the tribes. For good reason, because we do have a lot of interactions with LOT. We also received a presentation on the results from the LOT's proactive testing of what's known as unregulated chemicals or contaminants in wastewater and reclaimed water. This is being done voluntarily now, because LOT anticipates that this testing is going to be required before long, and we want to be well-positioned to know and understand what's in the water now and what it's going to take once the requirements come down from the state and federal governments on what needs to be done. I don't mean for that to sound scary. It can, but I think when you're looking at contaminants in water, you're talking about, you know, a drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, kinds of standards when it comes to water that would find its way to our taps. We also approved an inter-local agreement with Olympia for what's known as the Class A reclaimed water demonstration project. This agreement is like the ones we just approved a few weeks ago here. And the Class A reclaimed water demonstration project is taking treated wastewater and treating it to safe drinking water standards. This is to prove that it can be done. And we are probably looking at a day, you know, hopefully in the very distant future, but in a future where water is going to be scarcer than it is today, and we're going to have to find new ways of replenishing our water resources. So this is very futuristic. We will be the first in the state of Washington to do this project. So that's a bit of a point of pride there. The other just quick announcement is, Inter-City Transit Authority is advertising for people who would like to serve on the Community Advisory Committee. They're accepting applications this month, and we should have interviews this fall, and I think there'll be four or five, at least four or five new members chosen. And the Transit Authority itself meets tomorrow at 5:30. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
So I had a TRPC meeting on September 5th, and the agenda was packed. So I've got a couple of things I wanted to share with the group. We'd first discuss some updates to the comprehensive plan review checklists. So TRPC, in their role as a metropolitan planning organization, has to verify that certain elements exist in each city and county's comprehensive plan. So we're in the midst of developing our plan now. TRPC has put together checklists so that we can say, yes, these elements are in our transportation element, they are in our land use element. So there were some modest updates, including sort of putting a greater emphasis on the safety elements found on that checklist. I've said before, and I'll mention it again, that I think the checklists are not only a good, you know, exercise for TRPC to, you know, complete, they could also be useful for us as a city in helping members of the public find things that they might be curious about in our comprehensive plan draft. Reading the entire comprehensive plan might be a bit much to come through for the average member of the public. It's a lot for us, too. But those checklists could help you find the highlights related to land use and transportation. So I think we should include them as we're doing our own outreach with our citizens on the comp plan draft. We had appointed representatives to the 2026 Work Program Subcommittee, so the folks that are going to plan our agendas and our work focus for TRPC for the next year. We also approved a recommended staff salary adjustment. So TRPC last year identified that they wanted to do a market survey for how they paid their own staff. They did that, came back with some recommendations, because they found that the TRPC staff were somewhere between 6% and 11% underpaid compared to, you know, market comparators in the local area. So they didn't adjust everybody's salaries all at once. Instead, they reassigned the existing staff to new ranges within their existing grid. So there's not a huge price tag on the adjustment all at once, but it will give an opportunity for future growth, where people who might have been topped out will now have a little bit more room to go up, which is an investment in keeping excellent, highly skilled staff. We also talked about our 2026 legislative priorities. The upcoming session is a short one, so we're not, we don't have a lot of priorities to focus on, because it's a short session, and we know that funding is going to be tough. We want to preserve funding for TRPC and continue to press for additional financial support for smaller MPOs that don't have the resources to do a lot of planning to go get those bigger grants. We're also hoping to seek funding for a currently unfunded project to identify a preferred rail route between the DuPont Sounder Station and, many years from now, a connection with the state capitol for rail. So we'd need to figure out what the route would look like, long before the planning can really happen. So we need money for that. We also talked about high-capacity transportation, speaking of. We kind of reviewed the landscape. We have a, you know, in October of 2024, we had a forum that brought together city, county, state, and federal partners to talk about different opportunities related to high-capacity transit for the city of Lacey and Thurston County. We had representatives from Pierce County, we had folks from Inter-City Transit. It was a really cool event. TRPC is talking about making that a more regular event, where we would have a forum on a, you know, maybe an annual or bi-annual cadence to bring everybody together to talk about land use planning and high-capacity transportation opportunities. We also passed our High Capacity Transportation Vision Statement, which is, "The Thurston Region Envisions a Future of Seamless, Convenient, and Sustainable Transportation Options Within Local Communities and Connected to the Greater Puget Sound and Beyond, Supporting the Needs of a Growing and Dynamic Region," which is a real cool vision for the future. We also got an update on the search for a new executive director of TRPC. So the next TRPC meeting on October 3rd, we will be, again, getting an update from the contractor. We've brought, Prothman is doing the search for us. We do have qualified candidates in the pool. The posting just closed Sunday, whatever September 14th was. On October 17th, the Subcommittee on Recruitment is hosting interviews with the selected qualified candidates. We're going to identify the finalists from that group that we'll be interviewing on the 17th, and we're planning to invite them to join us at the November 7th meeting for finalist interviews in an executive session. There should also be a community reception where folks have an opportunity to meet the finalists for the next executive director of TRPC somewhere around November 7th, so perhaps the night before November 6th. That's not finalized yet, but that's the plan. So by our meeting November 7th, we should have a good sense of who our next executive director will be for TRPC. And that was a lot. I think I'll leave it there.
Well, okay. Councilmember Dunning?
I do not have any reports.
Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. We're going to be adjourning to a work session, and I'm going to call at least like a 10-minute break. It's 7:20 now. We can re-convene at 7:30. And so without objection...
Mayor, is there going to be a separate, is the same Zoom?
Same Zoom link.
Same Zoom link. Thank you.
Okay, so without objection, I will adjourn to the work session. Okay, so without objection, I will adjourn to the work session.
Okay.
Hey, Abby. Never mind, never mind.
It's seven thirty and then we're gonna reconvene into this twenty twenty six budget workshop. You can see where one council member actually had a run home and will be joining us remotely. Councilmember Vasquez will be joining us remotely shortly. But with that, let's just jump right into. Turn over to Rick and Troy.
Great, good evening, council. We're about to conduct our annual budget workshop. Certainly appreciate this discussion. It's always helpful for us as staff to get a little bit of direction from the council on some major initiatives. And allows us to put together a budget that you actually want to see. So appreciate you taking the time. Do you want to point out that these numbers are very high level at this point? They're definitely going to change. In fact, seems like every conversation I have with Rick, the numbers change. So I know for a fact these numbers have already changed as of today. So bear that in mind. This is very much a work in progress as we get through the budget process. So we'll provide some information, some updates as to where the budget is. And at the end, we're going to ask you some very specific guidance questions. So we could move forward with the budget. So as in past years, we're gonna cover basically the same topics. We're gonna talk about revenues, expenditures, some of the major initiatives within the budget that's being proposed. Gonna talk about labor. We're gonna kind of wrap things up with the budget summary and then we're gonna look to you, the council, to give us some direction on some very specific items. But we want to do something a little bit different. We're gonna give you the state of the budget, just given, you know, the past deficit that this budget was adopted with. So we're gonna start with the, we'll call it the problem statement, and then we'll kind of work through some of the issues. That way you kind of know what you're dealing with as you're kind of thinking about some of the things that we're suggesting within this budget. Feel free to interrupt anytime. I'm gonna start things off, bounce over to Chelsea for expenditures and then over to Rick. So very much a team effort here. So the current state of the twenty six budget. As it stands today, actually, we'll say ten o'clock this morning before I talk to Rick at noon, we had a.
So it's all Rick's fault.
I'll take it. He didn't change it a lot, and I know. A lot. Right now, the projected budget gap is about two point seven million dollars. I'll remind the council that the twenty five budget was adopted with about a one point eight million dollar deficit. So this one hasn't grown that much, but there's been a lot of steps that have happened in the meantime, and we'll cover that, of course. So general fund, again, projected gap about two point seven. At this point, we have general fund revenues of about seventy point three million and expenditures at seventy three million. Do you want to remind the council that you do have a reserve that can be used for this very purpose? We have a three million dollar committed reserve. We call it the budget policy reserve. It's really to kind of bridge these gaps, to look at different, you know, things that happen within economy, the cycles and ebbs and flows of the economy. I also want to point out that we are using, again, the one point eight to balance the twenty five budget. At this point, I don't think we're actually going to have to use that, so we can kind of add that to the top of that three million. No promises. There's still a lot of year to go, but as it looks right now, I don't think we're going to have to use that.
Do you not think you're gonna have to use any of it?
I don't think so. It's, right now, it's looking like our vacancies, it's our labor costs are going to come in lower than budget. We're currently sitting at around thirty vacancies, I think. So those savings themselves, I think, will allow us not to use this reserve.
Just join us.
Welcome, Councilmember Vasquez.
Greetings.
So I do kind of want to walk through a timeline of really what's happened since we really started the budget process at the staff level. We've taken a lot of different actions. I think it will be useful for the council to see what we've done so far. So here is a timeline of our budget gap. And we're gonna start on August fourth. That's when we finished the first revenue projections. We finished the labor projection, so that covers the bulk of the budget. So we started in early August with a three point seven million dollar deficit. Also, we took out all of the one-time budget initiatives from twenty five, again, labor and all revenue projections. Have you heard about our line-by-line expenditure analysis? So we concluded that and entered those savings, in this case, into the budget on August twenty first. So we had about a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. We'll go into more details about exactly what that exercise looked like in some following slides. But here we saw the deficit decrease by about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On September third, we calculated our internal service fees. And this is primarily water resources and engineering design. So those are services that are provided by our engineering services, water resources department, that serve our utilities, serve our transportation capital budget. So once we knew what those budgets looked like, once we knew what labor looked like, we were able to calculate those charges. So we inputted that into the budget, which ended up being a net positive in terms of revenues. So our deficit at that point dropped to two point five million. On September fifth, city manager was able to provide finance, some guidance on some tentative approvals of departmental requests. The majority of these requests were funded by reserves. So the city manager tentatively approved about one point nine, two million dollars of new requests. About one point eight of that is being covered by one-time reserves. So we didn't add a whole lot to the deficit, so your deficit went to two point six million. On September tenth, we inputted the equipment rental rates into the budget. So the way the city handles its large equipment vehicles, it's actually owned by our equipment rental division. We essentially rent out of those pieces of equipment out to the operating departments. So we had about a four hundred thousand or so million dollar increase. So that moved the deficit back up to three million.
Can you explain, what's the philosophy behind doing that? Doing, like, having a central, then renting it out? I know by renting it out, you can charge a little bit more and, right, and then you collect it. So you can, that helps that reimburse, you know. It has all the, it's something like you're acting kind of like a business in that circumstance, where you're renting it out for more than, so you can get replacement costs in there, so you can buy more vehicles to rent out.
Right, so it's really an internal service fund. So rather than take our vehicles to an outside contractor, we handle all that maintenance in-house, so to speak. But there are some things that we do have to seek outside help, you know, bodywork, you know, if a car gets into an accident. But there's really two components. There is the operations and maintenance, so fuel, normal, you know, O and M, like oil changes, tires, windshield wiper blades, that sort of thing. But as you mentioned, there's a component for replacement. So we collect a replacement fee for each vehicle, and we take a look at the life of each vehicle. Typically, five years, somewhere less, somewhere more. But right around five years, we collect one-fifth per year, plus an inflation rate. I think the inflation rate we're using is five percent. I think that's what you're referring to in terms of a little bit more. We're actually not keeping up, and you'll see some slides later on about that as well. So it's really just a way for us to track, think of it more of an accounting mechanism versus an operational mechanism. But it's basically an internal shop in which we take care of all the vehicles in the city.
It also ensures a little bit, too, just the, we'll maintain vehicles and replacing those vehicles versus the other. If we don't charge that and have them as replacement dollars, then when we do have to replace a vehicle, we may have to extend it, we'll be on its life, and then all of a sudden you get into a vehicle that's not functioning.
At the end of the day, it's really an accounting mechanism more than anything else. Because you could do that for a vehicle individually through, you know, I guess it'd be a little bit harder to keep track of. But I mean, you could do it, it's just, okay.
It takes a lot of burden off of our departments, too. So on nine eleven, we did some more adjustments to the budget. We inputted a little bit of labor adjustments. We also inputted the anticipated operations and maintenance costs of the new police station. So that moved our deficit up just a little bit, about almost three point two million dollars. And then very most recently, I think that was Friday, we did some more adjustments. We inputted our vehicle replacements for the year. We also did a little more of a budget scrub. We took out some funding for special projects that haven't been approved yet. That way, we just kind of have an apples-to-apples comparison between revenues, expenditures. So that brought the deficit down to two point seven million dollars, and that's where we stand today. I do want to show the council and the public the amount of reserves that, at this point, we plan on presenting to the council in terms of proposed budgets, as well as the projects that will be funded. So altogether, it's about two million dollars in general fund projects and operational issues that were proposed to be funded by reserves. You can see a lot of building repair, equipment replacement on this list. There's some investment in strategic economic development investments. But there are some operational items in there. The rapid response team is funded from reserves. At least a portion of the two thousand twenty six body worn and vehicle cameras. We're buying or we're using these through a lease agreement, so we're paying lease expenses on those. And we're also funding two hundred thousand dollars of our energy conservation efforts from one-time dollars as well. So altogether, again, using about two million dollars in reserves for these purposes. So next, I want to talk about revenues. Here on the screen, you can see the general fund's projected revenues for twenty six with the side-by-side comparison to the two thousand twenty five budget. All in total, it's about eighteen point one million dollars less than two thousand twenty five. The vast majority is coming under that all-other category. That is mostly transfers and beginning cash. The bulk of that is beginning cash, about an eighteen million or, yeah, it's about an eighteen million dollar difference. We have Gray Kyo Park, that's about six million dollars of beginning cash. We have three million dollars for the regional permanent supportive housing project within that cash amount. We have transfers of about one point eight million, and then just kind of a whole list of one-time capital replacement or facility repairs coming out of reserves. So that makes up the bulk of the difference. Service fees are going up one point three million. Most of that is coming from those internal service fees. Again, engineering design, as well as water resources, is making up the bulk of that one point three million dollar increase. And I will cover the remainder of those revenue sources in future slides here. So sales tax, this is far and away the general fund's largest source of revenues. Total projection, general fund-wide, is about nineteen point three million in sales tax. This includes the general sales tax, it includes our share of the criminal justice, countywide criminal justice sales tax, as well as our share of the countywide public safety, the new public safety sales tax. So have just a slight decrease. It's essentially a zero percent projection growth. But we do have, you know, variances within those categories. But public safety tax notably is being projected about a hundred thousand more than last year. Sales taxes at this point are projected to consist of about twenty, almost twenty-eight percent of all general fund revenues. To give you some background on why we're projecting a zero percent change to sales tax, you see these reports every month, but for the public and anyone else who might be watching. If you look at our two largest sources of sales tax, retail trade and construction, over the last twelve months, going back from this August, our retail trade has decreased about one point eight percent. Construction has decreased eight point two percent over the last twelve months. If you just look at year-to-date, so year-to-date, January through, this is actually January through June, since we collect sales tax two months in arrears. Retail trade is down two point six, and construction is down one point two percent. So that's why we're not projecting any growth in sales tax. You, of course, have seen the last two reports, and we did have growth in sales tax. But at this point, I don't think it's enough to think that we're going to have any sort of robust growth in sales tax.
Question. So why are you predicting, then, the public safety sales tax to increase? Because isn't it the same basis? It's all coming, it's all a percentage on sales tax, so why would that one go up if we're expecting more?
So public safety is a countywide. So the way that is distributed, it's a countywide sales tax. I believe the county gets forty percent, and sixty percent is distributed on a per capita basis. So take into, you know, the UGA, City of Olympia, City of Tonwara, so kind of estimate difference, yeah. So property tax. What's interesting about property tax is we haven't seen a preliminary assessed valuation report from the county yet. And my understanding is we won't see one until the end of this month, so we're a couple of weeks away. Normally, we see at least one, sometimes two, so these projections are all mine, so.
Is that because they're still trying to figure out their budget issues?
I'm not sure. Yeah, it could be, but.
Because they gotta set their rate to cover their.
Yeah, I mean, the assessor's office has to get all that information and then ask, come on the way up. And I know for a fact that everyone's struggling with the budget issues.
It's, you know, there's prescribed law that talks about how you value properties and that. But yeah, I mean, we're all struggling to put our budgets together, so, you know, I'm sure that it certainly is a contributor. So altogether, a nine point five million dollar projection for property tax, about a two hundred fifteen, two hundred sixteen thousand dollar increase. This new construction number, again, that's my number. That's not the county's number. So the assumption at this point of the modeling is a hundred and seventy-five million in new assessed valuation. Just for some perspective, we added about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine million last year. Just looking at sales tax construction, I, fingers crossed, it's somewhere not a hundred and seventy-five million.
That's still not, that's still a pretty decent number. I guess you still, you know, you look at the major projects still going on in Northeast Lacey. I mean, that's, we're still seeing some major construction going on out there, and it's gonna continue for a bit. And we still haven't even seen some stuff break around yet.
Now, that's certainly part of the consideration, so.
But they capture the new construction, what, it's not.
Twelve months.
It's not at the time of permit, right? It's like, it's down occupancy, it's down the low is, yeah.
Right, it's when, in our case, when we submit the certificate of occupancy, it gets reported to the county. And they run on, I think, August.
Yeah, somebody August is counted for some extra years of that, before August, if it's after August, then it's delayed, yeah.
So this is the one seventy-five that you think is gonna hit the rolls?
That's number we're using so far that generates about a hundred and twenty-three thousand in property tax.
So that changes one way or another. That'll either go up or down. The good news in that is it's not gonna be a tremendous impact, just because our labor rate is so low. So it's about seventy cents times a hundred and seventy-five million divided by thousand. So even if it moves, you know, fifty million, it's not gonna, it's not gonna move the needle too much for us, thankfully.
The projection at this point does assume that the council exercised the one percent. Uh, the projection to this point does assume that the council exercised the one percent, um, increase. Um, just for reference, the. Um, the estimate at this point for the inflation factor that determines whether we could take the one percent is two point five percent. Um, I think that number will become official next week or by the end of the month, it's typically in September, so we'll know that number for sure real soon. Uh, as always, I like to, you know, give some perspective in terms of property tax here in Lacey, here's your typical ten year. Uh, snapshot of what's happened to property tax, and during this ten year period, we have nine years of. Values going up and just one year of decline, that year of decline was in two thousand twenty four. Of course, levy rates and valuation or appreciation or depreciation and and valuation are in inverse relationship, so. We've had declining levy rates for nine of the ten years, and that one year that valuation went down, we had a a small increase to the levy rate. Do you want to talk about the potential impact on a typical house in Lacey, um, it's about the one percent? And, uh, you know, what, depending what happens to the levy rates, it's about a four dollar and forty three cent. Um, impact to the typical house, again, this year we're using about five hundred thousand. Um, according to Zillow and Redfin, we had about a one percent, one point three percent increase to s- single family home valuation, um, since last year. Um, as well as the impact of what's happening to our, I believe our final debt payment on card bonds is next year. So again, four dollars and forty three cents for typical home in Lacey. Um, do you want to point out the impact the one percent has on a typical house, again, using five hundred thousand as a typical house? Uh, the one percent increase is about three dollars and thirty cents over the two thousand twenty six calendar year. It's about six tenths of a percent, uh, six tenths of a penny in terms of levy rate. Uh, looking at some of our other major sources of revenues, utility tax, uh, the total projection is about nine point seven million for two thousand twenty six, that's about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. Uh, the, or nine point one percent, uh, the major changes. Uh, electricity increased about three hundred and eleven thousand, Lacey utilities about three hundred and eighteen thousand, natural gas about two hundred thousand. I'm actually projecting that, uh, telephone utility tax going down again about thirty seven thousand, but again, a. An increase of about eight hundred thirteen thousand, takes into effect kind of. Trend analysis as well as projected growth and what we know about, uh, rate increases.
Okay, so, um, I'm wondering if, this is not a homework assignment, I just, it's it's the way my mind works, okay? So if we take our our twenty twenty four seventy two and a half cents, um, and and we. We take the difference between the estimated twenty twenty six of sixty seven and a half cents, and we use that factor to. Run the numbers backwards, I can't say any better than that, to see if that number is greater than the one percent. I I know, it's it's weird, um. I I I can do the math at, you know what I mean, like, if I'm sitting in my office and really, you know, take a minute with it, but. I I think the one percent is going to be less than. The difference between twenty four and twenty six.
If I, i- if we go increase the one percent?
Yeah, I think, I think that even if we do the one percent, the residents are still gonna get a break. Um, between our our twenty four and our twenty six, because. Yeah, I it shows us four and a half basis points, but those, that four and a half basis points. Whatever that equals, right, in percentage, I honestly believe that's gonna be less than one, the one percent that. Uh, that the council has the ability to do, does that make sense?
Well, I, no, I think you're. Property taxes are really confusing, I I I think one thing that, you know, just going back from two thousand seventeen to what we project for twenty twenty six. I mean, our levy rate has dropped sixty eight, almost sixty nine cents.
Yeah.
Since two thousand seventeen, we were talking about the Metropolitan Parks District. If we would have added the forty seven cents if it's passed, our levy rate would still be less than it was in two thousand seventeen, which is what. Right, right, which is what you're trying to, the levy rate.
With the valuation.
With the valuation.
As we know, it's an inverse relationship, so as the values go up, the rate goes down, you also got to keep in mind that in seventeen through twenty one, we still had a fire safety.
Sure.
Bond that's no longer there, but that didn't, that wasn't an actual savings, that just got moved from us to the to the fire district.
Right, sure.
And where they're taxing it, so.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that's now gone, and then, of course, you know, you you could see what it's done to our our parks bond, right?
Well, that'll be gone.
Back in seventeen, and that's gonna be gone, that used to be as much as almost thirteen cents back in two thousand seventeen, and now it's dropped down to, you know. Two cents, less than, you know. Less than, less than three cents, and so it's just, it, man, it's so hard to explain this information to the general public.
I I think in theory, I'm trying to connect it. Go backwards, I I think in theory, if a home in Lacey. Either increased in value or decreased in value exactly the same as the countywide change. And then if you applied our levy rate, I think it would equal one percent and take, remove the debt. Voter approved debt, because that changes with the the debt payment, so if you're just looking at that general levy, I think in theory, it's one percent. Across, I think the line is just a one percent line.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah.
But the.
Right, it has to be.
But there's almost no chance that a single property.
Right.
Went up or down exactly the same as the county.
On average, it's one percent, but.
So, I mean, that's what makes it really difficult, uh, I'll I'll use my home as an example, I I don't know what. What's going on with my home exactly, and I'm not, certainly not criticizing the county, but. My house seems to be about a year or maybe two years behind, so in years that. That properties have gone up, mine's still is going down, and then when it went down, since the two thousand ten through two thousand thirteen. My house went up, actually, so I was getting actually. The opposite impact in terms of the benefit of that lever rate moving in the opposite direction, so it really just depends on the property. I believe that the county assessor's office must.
Every four years?
Do a physical appraisal, I don't think it's, they don't walk through our house, obviously, but. They had to do a more in-depth appraisal, I think it's every four years, so. That's going to be a much different change in valuation on that every fourth year, so there's just a lot of factors, you know, the mayor's right, it is. Extremely complicated and we're not going to. Easily explained to the public, because the house isn't going to do exactly what we're saying here on the screen, so.
We've been trying for years to explain this to the public, and it's it's nearly impossible.
Yeah, you guys keep using the word complicated, I like to use the word fun.
Oh, I'm having fun, for sure.
Yeah, but as I was saying, you're right, I mean, of course, we've had a bunch of increased assessed value. But the fact that our levy rate has changed so much, dropped, you know, sixty nine cents since two thousand seventeen, shows you how much growth we have had. And and if we would have, and if that would, MPD would have passed back in two thousand eighteen, you would saw that same. Drop of sixty eight cents from, you know, so, right, I mean, so. Anyway.
Uh, company utility tax, so B and O tax, um, our projection is about three point eight million, um, a little bit of an increase, about seventy three thousand, this is mostly trend analysis. Um, we've talked at quarterly reports about. We think it's the service industry that's actually causing this increase and not retail sales, otherwise the base, the base is about the same as sales tax. Um, admissions tax, um, actually have a slight increase, about ten thousand dollars, um, we've talked a lot about this in terms of. Where admissions tax is today versus pre pandemic and just the change in behavior and how people are getting their entertainment with with streaming and. How quick actually movies and things like that are available streaming as for these. It seemed like you waited six months now, it feels like weeks.
Sometimes it comes out on streaming immediately, it doesn't even go to the dinner first.
Uh, gambling tax, um, no change from two thousand twenty five, they're. Basically coming in as as projected so far this year. Um, but, you know, do you want to note that this is a pretty decent sized increase compared to pre pandemic levels, you know, about a hundred and.
Yeah.
Thousand or so.
Well, and our pre pandemic rate was higher too.
Hmm, it was twenties fifteen.
I mean, how long ago did we reduce that rate?
Twenty fourteen.
It was that long?
Yeah, it was.
Wow, okay. I had been there a long time.
I'm surprised that place brings in that much revenue, because.
Um, parks and recreation fees, uh, this is actually down just a little bit, you know, we've had some changes to programming, but. You know, we're we're pretty close to budget right now, so we can do there. Um, investment income, we're projecting about a nine percent, nine and a half percent decrease, that's. There's a couple of factors there, we've had a lot of cash drawdown for major capital projects as well as anticipating Federal Reserve rate decreases.
What are we thinking about the Fed on Friday?
Uh, well, it's hundred percent built in for at least a twenty five basis point move down.
Quarter?
And I think there's some to think and some that believe it should be a half a percent. Uh, I think the general consensus is three twenty five cent or twenty five percent, point two five percent decreases for the remainder of the year, so.
Is that factored?
Uh, this is, uh, fifty basis points down.
That's fifty, bitch?
Or, right about there. Yeah, fifty basis points would be about eleven percent decrease.
And plus, we've seen that a ton of our, um, reserves that we were getting interest on obviously dropped, because the awesome one up to the police station and other. There was as well, so. I'm surprised it's then dropped more, to tell you the truth, uh.
Well, two thousand twenty four, the general fund collected about two point four million, two point three, so it actually has over a two year period.
Over, okay, yeah, two year period.
Yeah, most of the drawdown happened in twenty four, twenty five. Uh, do you want to spend a little bit of time talking about, uh, utility rates, um, we have. Um, adopted rates for water and sewer through twenty twenty seven, so that's for two thousand twenty six, five point two five percent increase for water. That's about a two dollar and one cent increase for a house using seven hundred cubic feet. Uh, for sewer, it's a nine point five percent increase, that's three dollars and fifteen cent increase. Um, at this point, we do not have an adopted rate increase for stormwater, but our budget at this point is assuming a four point five percent increase. This is the same rate increase as the last four years, um, so we'll be having more in-depth discussions with the council, um. Through probably work session and, uh, certainly during the revenue hearing. Uh, so four point five percent equals about sixty seven cents per month for residential home.
I'm I'm really curious of, you know, here we are, how many years into our, on that rate increase?
Twenty one, two thousand twenty one, so four years, fifth year will be next year.
So if it, yeah, I I'm curious of what we were projecting the revenue to be and what it's ended up being, right? You know. We did this because we had, we had projections in in line and, but we haven't had a really a a check back to see where we are. Are we meeting those projections, are we seeing those projections, so on so forth, I I know I brought that up last year, but I would, you know. I was never a big fan of of doing multi-year increases, but, um, I'd rather do it off of actuals than, you know. Than do it this many years in advance, but we we should at least have a bill to have a check in to see where we're at.
Sure, yeah, actually, our public works team has started the expenditure analysis on that, so look at the capital improvement program, so, yeah, we're actively working on. Uh, lots increases, three percent or a dollar forty three per month, so cumulative here on the screen, all utilities for a typical. Residential account, it's seven dollars and twenty six cents more per month.
What is the current lot rate, I I I try not to look at it on the bill.
Current lot rate is forty seven and a half, some, uh, forty seven fifty roughly, going to year forty nine.
I remember it was twenty five ninety nine.
Cause, cause I I know the other thing is, it's like, I know that's, this is like the base amount, it's going up, right?
Yes.
But in reality, what what is the actual cost to the average? I mean, we we should have an idea what the average, um, household uses in water and, you know. Obviously, stormwater, it stays the same, but on 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 the water and in the sewer, we we should, we basically have an idea what the average bill is, and so. Do we have any idea what this in in real life is, not based off of the minimum, because no one uses, I mean, very few people use the very, the minimum use.
I can't recall off the top of my head, actually, one of Scott's folks actually did a really in-depth analysis of residential accounts versus multi-family, so.
Because the other thing we had never really taken account, and what affects me, obviously, a lot maybe more than the average person, is on. On the commercial side, right, we and we never talk about what happens on the commercial side of things, but, um, you know, this is a huge, huge expense for people, you know, um. It can be a huge expense for people on the commercial side as well, and so, I'm I'm just sort of curious on what that's doing in in real life.
Yeah, the typical household is. I mean, it's, there's probably a much bigger range than you would think, like, I'm one that uses four hundred cubic feet per month all year long.
Wow.
I don't have a lawn, I water, my HOA does.
Yeah.
But I do not, so.
Well, that's lucky you.
Um, whereas, you know, some people have big yards and have lots of irrigation where I I don't, so there there's.
I have a small yard and it still doubles in the summer.
Yeah.
From the winter.
Just saying, I don't, I'd use more than four hundred cubic feet.
I think it costs more than that to fill my hot tub up, so.
But 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 that is, uh, we will look and see what we get, like, it was average household use, because there's so many variables too, there's large lots, small lots, irrigation, non-irrigation.
How many people.
Family size, multi, you know, you know. To the, even if you have a two bedroom, it may use more than a four bedroom, because you have more people in the two bedroom, you know, you you just so many different dynamics, we'll see what you can find out with the average, average billing, so, outside.
Okay.
And that's just kind of anecdotal, I think that's where that nine hundred cubic feet number comes from, that was used many, many years ago to determine the lot. ERU, uh, you know, the residential equivalent union was nine hundred cubic feet, so I imagine it's, that's, that might be somewhere close to what that. Year long average might be, you know, obviously.
We've done a pretty good job in some cases of 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 conservation though, too, and so it's been, I'm, you know, the average household hopefully is. Trying to fit, find ways to use less and not more.
And that's just kind of the purpose of the tiered rates too, right, the more you use, and you're trying to build in that, especially in the summer, most that conservation.
You all need to get down to the four hundred that Trojans.
No washing, no, no one can wash their clothes.
Um, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this slide, you've had lots of discussions with our assistant city manager, our potential revenue enhancements that's, uh, you're you're considering. Uh, but the point here is none of these enhancements have been incorporated into the two thousand twenty six revenue projection, so. Um, again, there's a lot more work to be done here, um, throughout this list, you still have another. Uh, big discussion coming up in mid October about potential revenue enhancements, so lots to be determined, but again, none of this is in the current projection. Okay, I am going to take a break and hand things over to Chelsea to talk about the expenditure side.
Um, okay, we have quite a bit of ground to cover on the expenditure side, um, the first, um, topic is salary and benefits, so. The total general fund salary and benefits increased four point three six percent and three point eight eight percent respectively. For, if we're looking at all the funds, um, it was three point eight one percent and four point five percent respectively. This is actually quite a bit slower growth than our historical average, which is closer to seven percent, and this is largely due to the fact that we have added very few positions in this prediction. Um, those percentages are higher than inflation still, though, so, um, it goes with kind of the typical high cost of benefits and, um, things like that.
That's really good on the benefit side, though, I mean, I I know, I mean, I was talking, I was in a meeting the other day and the. Lacey Fire Chief was there and. Lacy fire chief was there and they're taking fifteen percent on their benefits this year on their health, fifteen.
And I know I brought this up to the C manager earlier too, for the first time in many, many years, like maybe. Sixteen years, fifteen years, um I've saw double-digit increases in my company's health insurance, I mean, and I've talked to several other people. Who are in the same situation where health insurance costs have just dramatically climbed this past year um for a whole host of reasons, but um. I'm 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 surprised it hasn't hit us yet, you know, because I'm sort of seeing it out there in the business.
That is the trend, I mean, I have, you know, as you know, I'm in the insurance business, I don't really do the benefit side anymore, but I have a close friend who owns an agency and medical. Insurance in general is taking pretty significant increases just because of the cost of medical care.
Yeah.
Is continuing to rise, I mean, it's it's a direct correlation to the cost of care.
Baby boomers getting older and.
Yep.
Yeah, it's happening in the in the Jazzcom as well.
I think Chelsea's next slide will talk a little bit about the 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 medical increases and it's, you know, it's historically been averaging. Just below and just into double digits over the last several years, but I think you're talking about a much bigger double digit increase than than we've seen, but.
When when will we know for sure what the what the benefit is gonna be?
Um it's October, I think is when the benefits will go up.
So we won't, we we will know in the next couple of months for sure, but we don't know yet.
So this slide talks about all of the kind of projected benefits for the labor. Um hers is of note because what you see on the screen here is that it's unchanged at nine point one one percent. That's actually not what our current rate is, it dropped back in July of twenty twenty five um to five point five eight percent. This was largely due to factors that we anticipate to be short-term in nature though, and so in order to remain conservative and not under budget our retirement projections, we've left it at that higher nine point one one percent in these calculations. Um left did remain unchanged truly, um and so that's stays the same in our twenty six projections. The medical that you, medical dental um that you see on this slide is the current projections, they actually started out a touch higher than these ones, and so we've already gotten. Um updates from them, the only one that increased from the original projections was the Willamette Dental at the six to eight percent. Vision doesn't have any increase, and with workers' comp, we actually are pending um what that might be going forward, we don't have that information yet, we likely won't get it till December or January. What we do know with that though, um is we're expecting an increase and our specific experience factor, so our rating. Um will also be adjusted for twenty six and we anticipate that that will likely stay fairly high, in the last three years, it's been over a a one, meaning that our losses have been greater than expected.
Like one point two one was it?
And. Yeah, it was one point.
It's pretty high, we were accustomed to one point five.
Goodness, you know, the the what the cost that that's gonna be for a retro program too is uh, are you taking that, you don't know that either, right?
No, that's a pooling issue as well, so we get a little bit of benefit to that loss, so we spread over the pool, but.
Sure, but you know, the whole pool's gonna pay for it, you have to make up for it, and so.
We're not the only ones that are seeing that.
No, but this is a big issue right now, um yeah, um and we're seeing significant increases on that, on that side of things as well.
So yeah, in twenty third, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, our our personal experience factor went up by twenty five percent like both years, and then in twenty five, it actually went down just a touch, like three point seven percent. But definitely not back the other way, so. Okay, so the line-by-line analysis that you guys have heard a lot about, and so this is, the object, the objective was to preserve the continuity of city functions and better align revenue sources. And reserves with critical expenditures, so I just want to walk you through the process, um and it was multifaceted. So we did a six-year average um to create kind of a benchmark, so that established a perspective for us to utilize. Um and help us highlight patterns and anomalies, and then also look at highs and lows um along that same period. We also did a weighted um approach for the most recent fiscal year, so if we could see significant cost increases in like years four and six. We wanted to make sure that we looked at that closely to make sure that we were looking at the relevant information for what's to predict for the future. Um in those instances, more weight was placed on the latest data to better reflect the actual spending patterns. Uh we also did considerations of operational changes, so certain budget recommendations reflect anticipated operational changes. Um that may or may not have been fully materialized at the time of doing this um analysis. Another thing that we did was we tried to right-size the accounts, so we um adjusted where historical data showed us consistent overspending and underspending, which I'll talk about more in just. A moment, it's quite impactful actually. Um and then last, and probably most importantly, we made sure to receive department feedback, so making sure that our data what actually had real-world context and it made sense for the departments. Um so if they looked at a line item, looked at our proposal and decided that they thought a different approach would be better, we asked them to provide, you know, context. The operational need, the historical usage and future plans, so that we could then put their feedback into our process, which we did in almost every instance. Um so in general, you see that we had about a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar kind of uh savings identified. That, the individual components of that were total decreases of two point five million dollars, and then we also though in turn had total increases of about. One point five million, um which gets us that that net difference, and so really a lot of right sizing was done through this budget process, um just lining up where our actual expenditures were occurring.
So I know the one thing that's been on my mind is is looking at our capital improvement plan. And and what major projects do we have in the pipeline for, you know, twenty twenty six, and. You know, I think we're just now starting to see that what the impact of some of the tariffs are gonna be on those projects, but we don't. We don't know what it's the end result's gonna be, because we're still, we're still moving down this road and we're just gonna start seeing it. You know, how much do we have scheduled in 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 projects for for next year um dollar-wise, and have you. Put in a an inflation factor that you know it's probably gonna be more than than what we've seen in in twenty twenty five to try to figure out, you know, are we gonna. Are we gonna be able to do all those projects that 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 those dollars amount with, you know, that we have budgeted, or are we gonna be in the situation where we're gonna have to come back and um, you know. At some point and uh take a look at, you know, our our budget and that, can we keep moving forward at the same pace, so on so forth, so. Like, at what point are we gonna have to make some of those decisions? I know this is very complicated.
It is very complicated, but we're um our construction design team are constantly updating their estimates and projections based on. Um factors and and uh cost, construction price index is something that is, can be somewhat of an unknown. Um there have been different uh, you know, bid specs out there too, where um there's, you know. Contractors are trying to hedge that as as well, because they don't want to eat cost either. So going forward, we're gonna be looking at, and and uh in the next several slides when Chelsea goes through the budget, initially she's gonna talk about some of those capital projects. Um we have a lot going into design, not the construction yet, so it gives us time to kind of see what the construction field looks like, but we gotta be careful too that. There are critical projects that we do need to continue to move forward based on timing, whether it be uh utility infrastructure. Uh but some of those other projects may be more discretionary, we may have to hold back a little bit or wait for better bidding climate until these things kind of settle out and we get a little bit more consistency in bids. Uh but it is something that we're aware of and um and, you know, concerned about, and and that's also affecting some of our contingency factors on when we get to construction estimates.
Yeah, it's kind of built in, just the way we design projects, you look at the thirty percent design as we go through, the contingency is much bigger at the, when we know us.
Yeah.
Um so yeah, as information becomes more available, we'll make, we'll refine those estimates, so the closer we get to construction, the the more accurate.
And 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 the one thing that we know, you know, as an example, like, oh, the rack improvements under the PFD, you know, we're growing through that design right now, we'll get to thirty percent uh at the end of the year. That's a check-in point, but that's, you know, again, we're gonna be monitoring that all the way through and and. Um maybe those contingency factors may not decrease as we get further out, depending on the climate for um the type of materials you have to order and where it comes from.
Major budget initiatives, we kind of grouped these into some some general buckets, so the first one is economic growth and sustainability initiatives. There's a total of about eight hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars that's included in this uh category. That includes annexation, which is four hundred and three thousand dollars, this is gonna allow us to take the next step after completing the twenty twenty five annexation study. For large-scale annexations, um so notable costs included in that is analysis of fiscal impacts, development of GIS materials, public engagement, and then also a census.
Are we, on that one, are we gonna, I mean, are we starting that now or are we gonna have further conversations with the? I have trouble believing at this point that the county is ready to, I mean, I know they're they're giving you a bunch of positive, I don't believe the county is gonna be anywhere close to ready to move forward on anything.
So um.
Especially with their serious budget concerns.
That's another um conversation that um I've had with the county and that I am hoping to get a little more. Direction on um come uh Friday, when I have some conversations uh after the meeting, um one of the things that, you know, we we went and gave a presentation. Um they were very, you know, um, you know, positive and and at that point, um what what they. Where I'm hoping what we can do uh going forward when it comes to this issue is, you know, we set dollars aside, they have to set dollars aside to do the exact same thing. It doesn't make sense for us to do two separate processes, so if we can combine to do these studies. Um jointly, um you know, hopefully instead of four hundred thousand, it could be two hundred thou, you know.
There there's my concern, they don't, I mean, they've got a huge problem right now, you know, fiscally, so I don't know that.
And so.
I have trouble believing they're gonna come up with even two hundred, let alone anything more significant than that.
And this process is really set up for, I guess, you know, this, let's go to the next step, are we ready to go to the next step type of thing, and then there's the. Points where we're gonna get the indication uh whether the county is ready to continue or not, or the city's going to be ready to continue.
Make sure of that before we go, I mean, I get, putting the money aside is one thing, spending is another.
But before we spend the money, we need to have um some assurances, once we get to that point, that there's a, there's a um, it's a mutual project. And where we left it with the, uh when we met uh the mayor and Vanessa Dobie and I met with the county to kind of give an overview. Uh the county manager was going to meet with his staff and then come back to the county commissioners and talk about what the lift would look like on their side in terms of their organization, so we're waiting for that that step. And then if we move forward, as the mayor suggested, it'd be good if we funded, if we did decide to proceed, and we're going to get some uh economic data developed that we've. You know, hire the same, jointly hire a consultant to do that together and work as a, as a.
And.
As a partnership.
Either either way, we have to do the work, and so I, the best way is it's a joint, how how it gets paid for and all that stuff.
I don't know that I agree that either way we have to do the work.
Yeah.
If they're not on board, I don't see any reason to be doing any of the work.
The next step is for them to say, hey, we're ready to move forward, and here's how we're going to do, and we'll be checking in with council all along the way before we spend those dollars, but we need to send it out.
I just want to make sure before we spend, we have some commitment from their side that they're actually looking at moving this forward, because I don't see how they can at this point, so.
Well, uh you know, the early indications, they had unanimous approval to to move forward to the next step and then come back.
They wasn't spending any money though.
Sure, when, but like I said, when when it gets to a point, um the the other thing is is what I'm also gonna recommend, we have a deadline, right? If we're gonna go forward, one reason why we're going forward and talking about this mang station, because there's a, there's a revenue um attachment to it. And so we have to, so we have to um get to a point where uh a decision can be made prior to that, and so I think the only way. We can meet that deadline is if we uh have a a a joint committee of city and county uh electives that are working together, moving moving that process forward, because. What we don't want to is get near the end, have spent some money and we haven't get to a decision point and we're out, and so I think that's gonna take a a political process to, and you know, a check-in process along the way to make sure we're all. Making good decisions along the way, and uh you know, I will, that's one of the things I'm gonna be recommending when we talk to the county on 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 Friday.
And and so if the county does give the indication they want to go to the next step, that would be setting up that structure and figuring out what is the economic information that we need, and that'd be the first step of funding that study, that's not, that's that's a a small percentage of that. Four hundred thousand dollars, if it then continues to go after that economic study, both the board and the council will take a look at that, hey, it just still makes sense. And then you gotta go into the engagement process and start having conversations with those uh residents in those areas being annexed, that's where the bulk of that funding is is set aside for. So again, there's those incremental steps, there's opportunity to check in and say, does it still make sense or not?
Right, so another item in this category is the depot site, so there's about fifty four thousand dollars in the budget for that, that covers ongoing operation of the night market, which has been hugely successful, and then also associated maintenance for the depot plaza food truck. Um then another item is the Lacy Maker Space, that's two hundred thousand dollars that we're setting aside, uh that funding is to assist with projected twenty twenty six operating deficit. And then lastly is two hundred thousand dollars for climate im- implementation to fund uh climate and sustainability activities identified as regional priorities through the Thirst and Climate Mitigation Plan.
But the the depot site, the Lacy Maker Space and climate implementation, tho- those were ongoing, I mean, what was our numbers from last year, two twenty twenty five, was that very similar?
Uh for, it will be funded last year, so for climate implementation and Lacy Maker Place are the same numbers, um continue, and then the depot site, it's um. It's increased because it's looking at the market for the uh the contract for the market to be a two-year contract, so it's a commit going forward, so they can continue to build that market and create more marketing off-season.
Okay.
Um and then, of course, the amenities, we've been using those dollars and finding uh ways to spend on some of the improvements and repairs and and things like that, just in a site maintenance. It's just setting out a specific line item, so now we can track it a little bit better and allocate a budget line, so we're not trying to find other places to find those dollars to do those those maintenance work, that maintenance work, excuse me.
Yeah, but also on the depot site, don't we have, I know we have some work that needs to be done on the accessibility issue, that money is separate and that money's already set aside?
That's in the twenty twenty five budget, and it's working through the priority process with our construction and design team, I believe they're gonna start designing this this fall, and then. You know, if the pro- if the project doesn't move forward this year, it'll be carried over into next year.
And just another item of note on this slide is that all of those are funded through reserves, I like already identified reserves, so that's great news. Okay, operational requirements, this one is seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars roughly, these particular line items represent essential operating costs that are largely fixed and non-discretionary, they're primarily contracted services or obligations where we are required to maintain in order to support core operations. Um these have very limited flexibility in the short term. So some items, they're listed on the screen um that are included in that number, but district court, indigent defense, which is in expected to increase eighty thousand, um in twenty six. Jail service is another big one, a hundred and fifty three thousand is the projected increase there. Uh legal support, risk training, a hundred thousand dollars, this one's also gonna be funded out of reserves, so that's um a, what was that reserve for?
Yeah, emergency management funds.
Yeah, so, um then we also have Q O Park Operations, which is seventy six thousand dollars roughly, the lot class A plus, um it's the fifty thousand dollars, which I believe you referred to this evening, that is that the pilot project?
That's the lot pilot project for um converting reclaimed water into uh more beneficial use, it's something that Councilor Cox reported out in her lot report. And so it's a joint effort to uh help fund that effort, that project, and the idea behind it is that it will uh over time um save us dollars in the long term.
And how much, how much was that?
Thirty thousand dollars, fifty fifty thousand.
And that that's making this water potable, is that?
Yeah, well, it's it's in early stages of doing a a pilot program, um and developing that pilot program, it's gonna take several years for it to come to fruition, but it's an effort to. Show how uh reclaimed water can be converted to beneficial use and be and and work on it being accepted by the public.
Right.
I don't know if Councilor Cox has got, if you had anything more to add.
How much?
I mean, how much extra reclaimed water do we have right now? You know, we, we, the other thing that we've seen some investment in over the years is our purple pipe for reclaimed water. But we haven't really seen much use. We've seen no one really use that, right? I mean.
Well, a hundred percent goes to our water rights mitigate mitigation program. Um, and yeah, I mean, as more reclaimed is generated, we're experiencing growth, we're using more water, which then requires that we do more mitigation, more infiltration. And um, you know, that's gonna go on for the next twenty years. So uh, yeah, but anyway, yeah, this is a, this, this pilot program is very, very necessary in terms of, you know, somewhat plotting the course for our future. And uh, yeah, I mean, so fifty thousand dollars was committed in twenty twenty five, fifty thousand is being asked for in twenty twenty six, and it's money well spent.
So you think at some point some of that reclaimed water is gonna turn into potable water?
Oh, yeah, yeah, eventually, absolutely. There's kind of a timing to the acceptability of everything, so.
The other jurisdictions are contributing identical amount.
Sure.
So it's not just us, but.
Next one is repair and maintenance, about five hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. This portion of the budget reflects maintenance and repair costs that arise as part of the natural life cycle of our facilities and equipment. Addressing repairs and maintenance promptly, promptly prevents larger, more costly issues in the future and hopefully minimizes downtime as well. Uh, so the items you see here, uh, modernization of elevator car two, which is this one over here by the city manager's office. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's paid for through reserves. Community center um has sound system replacements and a beam repair also paid for through reserves. Senior center roof replacement, that's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's paid for through reserves as well. And then the rack has another, they also have a sound system replacement. Um, and then also mitigating field drainage issues. So these, there's, these are the natural turf areas on baseball fields two, three, and four, and that's about eighty five thousand dollars.
Um, in this category, I, if I remember right, it was, it was two years ago, but we had set aside um some money for what is now gonna be the old police station.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I don't, I don't remember what that amount was. I thought it was a million.
The million dollars one.
Okay. And that was, that, that was set aside twenty four, carrying over twenty five and into twenty six.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and that's still there. And this, you know, scheduled, budgeted for this year is the space, spatial study of both the city hall and the shop operation facilities. And once we get that um, that study done of how to reconfigure it, um, potentially reconfigure city hall and remodel. It also included what, how to use that space in the police department. And that's where we'll have a good understanding of how we may be able to use that, that reserve dollars.
Rick, does the study for city hall also include third floor and how we're utilizing that space?
Yeah, if you, if you recall, when we did, updated and adopted the, the campus facilities plan back in twen- into twenty twenty three, I believe, or somewhere around that time. We did a high level review of, of, of not only the future vacated police department, but also city hall. And we got just options to look, uh, how we can reconfigure spacing. Cause what we found in terms of future um staffing growth, we actually have enough square footage to just make it a, a more efficiently used. And so it also included third floor.
It seemed like, it used to be we weren't utilizing that very well, but I'm sure we're, we're onto it.
We, we have, we have grown up, we have grown up there. The uh, we still uh lease space to Congressman Strickland's office. And we used to use the other office up there for some storage and other things, but we now have relocated that storage. And we moved our H R department up to the third floor because we just needed more staff capacity. And of course, that, that move about a year ago prompted to look for new museum space. And that's what's prompted and spurred finding that retail location for the museum site.
And the old museum space?
The old museum space is actually gonna be still used to archive our museum collections. What they found that, when we, when we looked at trying to find another storage location and we looked at the retail space, that that space was better configured for our museum displays than the current museum location. Because of the room makeup.
Okay, the next bucket is critical resources. Um, this is the area where we're proposing additions essentially. And so it's a very small portion of our budget. It's two hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars. These are investments that we think are necessary and offer a higher, high return in terms of operational effectiveness. So included in this is that B N O top tax software that you guys talked about or heard about um last week. And then also it's, that one's budgeted at a hundred and nine thousand. Um, also is a number of public safety items, around seventy six thousand dollars worth. Those items are ongoing funding. We've got digital forensic resources, um, such as hardware, software, and tools. Increase to small tools budget, increase to the swap budget, as well as mandated increase to the basic law enforcement academy lodging and meals. And there's a cost sharing that's been implemented for that. And then we also have on here a Zoom call center. This is specific to utility billing. It's pretty affordable at fifteen thousand dollars. It's um gonna function like a true call center. So it's gonna have live monitoring of the number of calls and wait times. And then also we'll have a lot more reporting metrics, metrics available to us to um monitor those phone calls.
Okay, yeah. So when somebody calls in and get put on hold, they will get a total average wait time, other options to connect. And I think it also leave a message or provide a, a building for a callback period too, so.
Um, next is internal service charges. So this is equipment rental again, and then also information services. And this has increased as expected. This is driven by inflationary pressures, expanded asset inventories, uh, higher cost of maintenance and investments in upgraded equipment and systems. So with equipment rental, the main increases are related to internal city staff, labor, insurance, fuel, external repair and maintenance, and then depreciation costs. Um, also a big portion is replacement costs for newly acquired assets. So that's when we are trying to collect dollars so that down the road we can replace that later on. Um, an item of note, and it already came up ear- earlier tonight, is that we use an inflation factor of five percent to try to keep pace. Um, that has not been keeping pace with market conditions. So every single asset that we're projecting to replace, as far as like vehicles and equipment for twenty twenty six, has a shortfall. Um, but meaning that the department that's wanting to purchase the item is having to kick in funds on top of what we've kind of collected over time in the actual equipment rental fund.
So if five percent isn't working, what, what would work?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we haven't looked at specifically the exact percentage, but it's also a balance in what we can afford as far as collecting more on the front end too. So it's.
Yeah, one way or another, you're getting, you're getting priced heavy. And so that's one of the things going into twenty twenty six that we're gonna evaluate in preparation for twenty twenty seven is reevaluate our, how we do our internal service charge and figure out ways we can spread that cost out a little, a little bit further, or how, just ways how we can try to avoid these shortfalls.
Okay, so just off top, maybe seven?
Well, uh, it depends on the equipment. Um, if it's a, a, a Ford F one fifty or three fifty, it's probably a little bit more predictable. But if you get into the Vactor trucks and some of these other things, those are, have uh, you know, prefab builds, that can be higher. So it's just, it's across the board, it's a little bit different per vehicle. And I don't know if Joey or anybody else has any.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've made some operational changes that contribute to that too. So it's not all just inflation and I don't wanna pick on police, but like a police car. We had a big shift from the Crown Vic to the new Explorer, which, I mean, just initially doubled the price for a police car. And then you add cameras and radio systems. I mean, we used to put a Crown Vic out on the road for forty grand. Now it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars to put a police car out on the road. So that's contributing as well. There's a lot of specialized equipment that Rick was referring to. So, you know, you get a Vactor, that's probably fifteen percent a year. Street sweepers, fifteen percent a year. Um, if you start thinking about electrification of vehicles, that's a whole different conversation in terms of cost escalation. So there are a lot of factors that go into not being able to keep up with these replacement costs.
I think everyone is seeing that across the board. I know we're see, we saw it dramatically with Medic One, with getting the new, you know, Medic, Medic One vehicles. It went on far beyond what anyone anticipated. More than, more than double in the last five years.
Yeah, some very specialized vehicles too.
Yeah.
So, so unfortunately, there's not a quick percentage answer to it. It's, it's, and it's something we need to, to evaluate and figure out how we can um, you know, maybe predict that cost a little bit better and, and absorb it differently.
Yeah, cause when you, when you say consider, you know, when you shortfall, then, you know, it kinda seems like there would be some kind of indication um based on what that shortfall is.
Yeah. And so what's.
That's prompts the question.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we have a lot of me- uh, metrics that we can utilize too, like the projected asset life, which is what our replacement is calculated based off of versus the, the actual that we're seeing in our actual fleet. And so we have a lot of that data at our fingertips that we can play with, like Rick mentioned, for going into twenty twenty six. We kind of wanna look at, can we extend these for life? Are we actually keeping it longer? Would that allow us to build more funds over a longer duration and things like that? So.
Then also with that shortfall, it's usually made up with, with reserve. But as we go through these, and as Chelsea's mentioned, a lot of these um budget initiatives are funded with reserves. And we're starting to see those, especially in the facilities, those reserves diminish a little bit. So we're, we're also eye, eye on that and making sure that we still have funds available for emergency costs. An example of that is uh, uh, Chelsea mentioned like the modernization of the elevators. Actually, both elevators need to be modernized. But because the other one's located in the uh, the, the police department wing, we don't know what the use of that is. We're holding off on, on modernizing that one. So we have funds in that, that reserve to, you know, for our anticipated costs if we have something go down, like a mechanical equipment or something like that.
Just curious, like how many miles are put on a police car in five years?
Five years?
Yeah, like when we get rid of them.
Well, we shift, three years on police, three years they're in patrol. I think it's about forty thousand miles a year in patrol.
That's about, I was gonna say.
And then we shift them into other roles. They become not pursuit vehicles, I understand. So we're probably in the hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand mile range by the time we dispose a police car. And those are cars that are driven pretty hard. So.
Yeah, that's not a normal hundred and fifty thousand miles.
Yeah, I used to buy them at the auction in Auburn.
So on our current replacement list for twenty twenty six, there's three police vehicles that are up for kind of that replacement. They were all purchased in twenty twenty and they all have mileage of about between seventy two and seventy nine thousand miles on them. So.
Could I make a quick comment? You know, obviously Brian Gugamos is a professional fleet manager. So, you know, there's the rule of thumb for replacement for vehicles in terms of type of vehicle, mileage, year. But really, you know, I mean, if a vehicle hits the mileage in the year and it's operating fine, he's not gonna replace it. It really, you know, he looks for that sweet spot where you, you know, your, where your trend for maintenance is trending down and you're spending more and more on maintenance. So it's, yeah, it, there are the rule of thumbs, but you know, Brian looks at the dollars and cents and when, when is the optimum time to replace it? To the point if we use it beyond that, it's gonna cost us way more money.
Same thing with the personal vehicle, right? I mean, it starts costing more to maintain it.
Yeah.
And there's a time when it's time to get rid of that vehicle.
Right.
Or a market like my Jeep.
Brian always provides us the year to date maintenance costs along with that. And yeah, absolutely, we're making decisions based on exactly that. If it's cost more to fix than to buy a new one, we buy the new one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, information services, sorry. Um.
So, so we can get through this, right?
Uh, increase to basic operating maintenance lines were city staff again, software and hardware maintenance, telecommunications, and then also equipment purchases. So they have some significant equipment purchases proposed for information services. One is their rubric upgrade, which is basically our backup system. So this maintains our essential cybersecurity protections while scaling to meet increasing storage demands, cause we have more to store electronically. Um, the other item is the camera backend upgrade. So that standardizes all of our camera systems um to modern platforms to improve efficiency and reduce maintenance complexity. Okay, may, uh, let's see, police station and training center. So this is the new, the, well, are the new buildings over next door. So three hundred and almost ninety thousand dollars is projected for that operation and maintenance. So um, just high level stuff, janitorial, HVAC maintenance, lead abatement, insurance, utilities, that flavor um of items. And then also what's not included in that figure though is the indirect costs. So those are things that are gonna end up being absorbed by the affected departments, thanks street, thanks street sweeping, groundskeeping, facility maintenance. Um, basically without additional funding, it's just gonna inevitably dilute the current service levels. So that's just something to keep in mind as we absorb all of that.
Do we have any idea, uh, obviously with the, the, the training center, um, other jurisdictions are, are looking to use our training center? Have we figured out what a cost recovery is gonna be for that and, and how do we maybe offset some of that um operation and maintenance expenses?
No, we're still trying to figure out what the best course is for how it's gonna be used because primarily we want, we wanna use it for our department. And so we're gonna have to figure out um the rental, the cost, and then how much. Then we have to provide somebody to be there while another agency is in there as well. So we have a lot to work out still.
And, and there is a lot of interest in utilizing that for technical service contracts. There's also, again, working with the legislature and, and the legislative efforts for hosting the Abilia Academy. Or Abilia. Um, ultimately, in a general rule of thumb, looking at somewhere between twenty and thirty percent recovery. Cause even though we wanna provide that as a regional training facility, you know, as, as Lieutenant Barnes mentioned, there is some needs for us to be able to use the two. So there's our own cost of it. Um, and then uh, and then of course scheduling and all that, so.
So twenty third percent of our total that we have here?
No, the, of the training center portion, so. Cause you also have, you know, again, in the firing ranges, you have lead disposal, all those different things. So it's our specialty. You have range master responsibilities. So there's a host of different things that go into that, just the training center operation that we wanna make sure we can recover.
So twenty, thirty percent of what number then?
Um, this number's not broken out to the train, between the training center and, and the, and the, or the, uh, police station. So we gotta get that number together.
Yes, separate.
And that's the work that Shan- uh, Lieutenant Barnes has been referring to.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, this budget maintains momentum on key design and construction initiatives, along with planned vehicle and equipment replacements, which we just talked about quite a bit. Um, so you can see the police construction, police station construction is scheduled to go into twenty twenty six. So there's three point two million in there for that. And then rack phase three design, another one point nine million for next year for that. Um.
Talk about that a little bit. I thought, so we obviously, we've had some presentations on, you know, rack phase three. I didn't think we were actually moving forward with design.
It's, so there's a, it's, it's referred to as rack phase three, but it's the improvements to the existing soccer field.
Oh, okay. So, so, okay, so we are still talking about that. Okay, that, that, that's what I thought we were doing.
It's not the property phase three property.
Okay, good, exactly. We, we know that.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you a question.
Which one's way outside for a good reason.
At the point, I mean, maybe to start doing a title change, so we avoid that.
Yeah, child change.
You might wanna change, it's not phase three, it's just improvements to the current thing.
Yes, cause we wanna maintain phase three concept and strive for that. But yeah, it's rack, rack, rack improvements.
Okay, no, that's, okay.
We'll get there.
I think everybody makes a good point though in how we communicate about that because.
Yeah, cause we keep on saying rack phase, phase three, people are gonna think we're gonna be doing something for phase three, but we're not.
Yeah.
We'll call it two point, two point five.
That's a big race.
Yes, that's great. Okay, um, so there's also social service and climate initiatives in this budget um to make sure that we're keeping those programs active. Um, so there's a whole list on the slide. I don't know that you guys wanna go through each one individually. Climate implementation's on there again. But definitely the neighborhood grant program, human services grant program.
How much longer do we have on the LED streetlight conversion? Have we started that like ten years ago?
It's gotta, it's gotta be with that.
Yeah, I'd say there might be two more years or so. Uh, that program was basically started at the end of two thousand fifteen. It was estimated to be a ten year program. Um, you know, but there's assumptions that go into that in terms of how long the high pressure sodium bulbs are gonna last. And you know, as it turns out, just like you. How long the high pressure sodium bulbs are gonna last. And you know, as it turns out, just like you know with cars, there's cars that come off the assembly line on Monday. Wednesday and Friday and they all have different levels of quality. So yeah, we, we do have some bulbs that are lasting a lot longer than we estimated. For probably about two more years.
Uh, can someone ask guys?
Is the climate implementation funding the tier grants? Is that the money that we're setting aside to subsidize implementation of like low or energy efficient appliances?
To rebate?
This is, this is in addition to the here.
Yeah. Okay, so what is, like, can you give me a brief summary of what that money actually does?
Ken, it's a, it's a number of different things. Um, there's, um, um, dollars going towards, um, just the Thurston County. The TNC, TCMC activities, the regional coordination committee. Uh, there's the vehicle mi- uh, miles traveled study, that's a part of that. Urban forestry management plan and canopy assessment is a part of those funds. Um, home management score is, is something that's anticipated, depending on what the council policy decisions are on that. As well as the energized Thurston program. So there's a series of things within that, uh, that category that's been identified as, uh, uh, making up that two hundred thousand dollars. In climate initiatives.
That help. Thank you.
So capital, we have, this is that reference to the amount that we have budgeted for twenty six for the different capital funds. Um, I'm not gonna go into each one, but I do want to point out that preliminary indicators suggest that wastewater capital fund may be facing the greatest financial strain. So if this trend continues, debt may be required to close the gap. Um, further analysis and refinement of the O and M budget is gonna be needed to help clarify that path forward, so. Uh, here's our transportation projects. This slide, the twelve point five million that's listed there includes the five point four for TBD. And the majority of these are designed and right away acquisition at this time, so not a lot of actual construction is gonna be occurring in twenty twenty six. And, and those are the transportation benefit district, um, focus areas. So Willamette Drive Phase One. Stikes and Wellington improvements and then some miscellaneous sidewalk and slurry and crack seal. Okay, this is my last slide, I promise. Um, so workforce enhancements. We have, uh, we're developing proposals for two areas, which are the two lists first listed on that slide. One is utility project and design restructure, which is the potential for one position. This would be housed in the general fund, but likely build to the utilities, cause that's where they would spend the majority of their time and effort. Another one is utility billing restructure, which would also have the potential for one position. So those are kind of built into these budget numbers, but they're still developing and, um, it, it may change as we go through this process. The one that has been approved so far is the stormwater journey level maintenance tech. So this one was identified in the stormwater comp plans and is in our rate structure. Um, and this is really coming from the annexations that we've done. And so recent, um, additions to like streets and catch basins and just more work that's been created in that department.
Wasn't this position approved? It seems like this position was approved so long ago. Like, is that a hard position to fill or something?
No, this is, this would be a new position.
Oh, okay, second one.
Yeah.
Cause we did one last year, right? Like.
Two years.
Two or three years.
Yeah, two years ago. Um, and, and again, as, as Joseph said, part of the annexations and as we, and more roads and improvements are made and, and the catch bases, the works, uh, been expanding. And, and since it was part of the stormwater comp plan and built in the restructures, there's a funding source for that position.
Those expenses come from that fund, right? Those are not general fund.
Correct, correct.
Correct, yep.
Okay, budget summary.
So Joseph said that was her last slide, but still.
Wow. Okay, no one asked any questions. Fourteen more, you can do it.
Strategic.
I was looking at the public safety fund. This is the new countywide sales tax. Uh, we, you know, we're accounting for these money separate. But it occurred to me, this kinda captures exactly what we're contending with, just across our budget. So really highlights, uh, limited revenue growth, but expenditure growth outpacing that. So this provides both, I think, some perspective as well as an update on where those taxes are going and what good we're giving for those monies. So we started with our full year budget, two thousand twenty five, we had two point four million dollars, um, within our budget. Funds nine positions, uh, funds the mobile outreach team as well as four new vehicles. And the maintenance and operation of those four new vehicles, as well as a, a list of, uh, operating supplies for those positions. But when we look at two thousand twenty six, um, it's gonna be pretty limited what we could fund, um, with the sales tax growth. So again, about a hundred and two thousand or so in, uh, sales tax growth projected. Uh, the projected growth to salaries and benefits, four hundred and five thousand dollars. So as it looks right now, we're going to be able to fund with that new sales tax and nine positions, as well as the mobile, mobile outreach team contract. And we'll have about ten thousand dollars left over. All of the remainder of that, so two hundred and five thousand. Needs to either come back to the regular general fund or we need to transfer money in. So overtime, all the maintenance for the vehicles, all the supplies, training, uh, needs to find funding somewhere else. So again, it's, you know, it's, it's not great news, but it does illustrate kind of what we're contending with, higher expenditure growth.
And then you go into twenty seven and unless there's some dramatic change in the revenue side, it then funds, you know, eight officers instead of nine and so on and so forth. Yeah.
And this is before we even talk about House Bill twenty fifteen, right?
Right, yes.
And, but, but this, this gets us to seventy two officers? Or is it sixty eight?
We currently have seventy.
So, so of the nine.
We currently have seventy two and this adds nine to that.
No.
This is already.
This is the nine.
This is the nine attorney.
That gives us the seventy two.
Yeah, this, this, this is just articulating in a, a short-term example of the challenge we face of.
Yeah.
Inflationary factors and wage growth. Wage growth outpacing. So when we first started talking about the Prop one dollars and add, and funding these nine positions. Four new ones and five that were, you know, that are eating up reserves. It, uh, we thought we'd have a couple of years to be, before we absorb that, but it's actually been less, about a year, a year and a half. That now we're outpacing those wages and we're having to, um, you know, shift some of those items that we were funding in that Prop one dollars back into the general fund.
General fund.
And so it just kinda, it's a real short-term example of the, the challenges that we're facing.
Let's show you if you're, um, you know, the sales tax isn't increasing, uh, uh, more than your salaries and benefits, this is where you end up at, period.
Yeah, because we, as we know, the one percent growth in property tax doesn't keep up with inflation.
No, and then the, our sales tax, which, you know, is a big part of our, this as well, is, is not, not keeping up with either. And it's, uh, the overtime and stuff like that, that's where, that's, you know, let alone the salaries and benefits, but.
So this, 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 these dollars are collected countywide and they're distributed per capita?
Correct. So this kinda sets up this next slide that, uh, you know, going back a year, when we were going through the budget workshop for the twenty twenty five budget. We talked about, you know, we seen this, we're in a good position, we can do some planning. So we're looking at a three-pronged approach. Um, we're, you know, kinda looking at that as a, a two-year process. And so I'm reminded, we talked about this, it's gonna take some time, but we, we have time to work on it and started looking at one. One of the products, economic development activities, try to spur some of that reinvestment in the community with incentivizing development. Doing recruitment, creating, um, opportunities for small business development. Um, and, but we also know sowing those seeds takes a lot, some time for, for, for it to take hold and to reap the benefits. So that's a long-term example. We also talked about the second product, revenue enhancements. Of trying to look at, um, working shore up and, and find some other revenues. The council's been going through those conversations with, uh, uh, Shannon. To look at, you know, the various things like the gambling tax and the B and O tax and, um, um, uh, solid waste, uh, franchise fees, et cetera. The other piece, and this is now we're kinda getting to, cause we're looking at it as of last year, we're still right at the end of that, um, population growth and development activity. What is gonna be the new norm? So we weren't sure how the economy's gonna stabilize. And, uh, now we have a little bit more information. And so now we're identifying this, not only the revenue issue, but we also have some, you know, expenditure issue, just because of what we just talked about. Um, so again, going through the budget scribe, um, that Chelsea went over earlier. Um, looking at how we administer our budget and kind of, um, have a little bit better, stronger oversight of our, of our line items. But also we're gonna have to look at expenses. But at some point, you know, with that example that was just articulated in the last slide. With wages growing and, and revenue not keeping pace, we're going to have to look at how we be strategically address, um, costs. And that's also gonna include, um, service levels. Uh, we talk about the overtime and all these things. We wanna make sure, and using that, uh, public safety is that, we wanna make sure we're being responsive and creating that safe communities. How does that look like in the future? Parks maintenance, uh, we're not able to add a, another, uh, journey level maintenance to look at Cujo Park and the police station. So how do we spread that out? And as Chelsea, I think, referred to earlier, diluting our service levels. So those are those type of things we're gonna be looking at going into twenty twenty seven, um, or excuse me, twenty twenty six and setting up for twenty twenty seven.
I, as I look at that last slide, I was just thinking like, do, I know that, you know, the, the proposals to, to do nine positions, can we, can we.
Where are we hiring them?
That's not proposed, those are hired in twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
All, all that was shown with that slide was that, that, that additional revenue, what it paid for in twenty five, as opposed to now what it's paying for in twenty six, which is less. Because the cost of all of it went up.
And then the, the two oh five goes back.
This is no additional officers. This is the same nine we hired last, you know, that were funded, not nine new, but that were funded through this sort of resource.
And so the, is, is the idea here to maybe take the mobile outreach team, move that back into the general fund, you know, give us a little more?
Probably in twenty twenty seven.
Okay.
I think we still can't find it in twenty six.
That's gonna set up again for council and, and us as staff to talk in the, you know, in the next council retreat, what are those priorities and where do we focus those? Cause again, some of this stuff is, you know, looking at ongoing funding has great value, but how do we sustain it?
Okay.
Just a reminder to the council and public, you know, we have very strong fiscal policies that have been adopted by resolution by, by this body. Uh, I just wanna highlight some that I think will keep us grounded and keep us on the right path. When we do have reserve policy, we do keep two months operating, uh, reserve always. Uh, we also have a policy that will use reserves for one-time expenditures only. On the revenue expenditure side, um, really just built in conservative estimates, you know, using the, the best information we have at the time. Um, but also looking at expenditures and being mindful of what we can sustain long-term. I do wanna talk a little bit about the reserve process, um, for this year. Um, I, I think we need to spend a little more time to really confirm what the city priorities or the council's priorities are. We've talked about diminishing, uh, ability to fund repairs and equipment replacements out of reserves. We've been using those for a number of years and they're being depleted, uh, very quickly. And unfortunately, I think it's time we kinda think about our focus. Uh, we focused on expansion, new projects. I think we need to start at least thinking about, if not taking ash, action to. Stop thinking about things and new and expansion and talk about preservation of what we have. Uh, we have aging facilities and infrastructure. It's just taking a greater amount of dollars and attention and time. Um, we have an increasing burden of deferred maintenance. Rick talked about two elevators needing, um, retrofitting and we're only doing one. So we're adding to that deferred maintenance every single year. And as we add new facilities, that just puts a strain on the current ability to maintain and operate those, so.
That's, that's really dangerous long-term. We, we've got, I mean, we have to maintain the assets that we have. So I mean, I think, I don't think it's something that we, I mean, obviously we need to start looking at that refocusing on that. But I think we need to start taking action on it, not just talking about it.
Do these.
And it's time to start focusing on maintaining the assets we have. It gets way more expensive to replace things if you don't maintain them.
And do, do these line up with the study that we had done on all the?
The capital facilities plan?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, cause it documents what our existing, well, not all of our facilities, um, cause it's not just buildings. I mean, I owe, uh, Scott's team has done a lot of work on asset management, cause it goes with, um, more than just building. And it goes with other assets. Uh, so we are documenting and, uh, and looking at those, uh, items. You know, we talk about, um, um, like the senior center and the roof replacement. That's one thing, but we also have, um, you know, replacement of picnic tables and replacement of the, you know, garbage cans that are used. We're not be able to do this year because just the way it's working out and the funding, uh, and that's gonna be deferred maintenance. So, yeah, we're, we're monitoring and tracking and we get, that's part of the budget request process. Cause, um, our, our, our staff are identifying these things and we're, but we're keeping track of that. But to Council Green's point, it gets more expensive as time goes on when you're not able to keep up with that maintenance, cause then it becomes a bigger, bigger problem to solve.
Not a pretty picture, is it?
Yeah, and this, this, this is really a kind of a, almost a duplicate slide. We kinda talked about it. Troy just talked a little bit about the content aside and I did earlier. Um, but just to reiterate, we're not, we're not unique. There's a many jurisdictions going through this. Uh, but it is, uh, looking at that revenue and expenditure challenge. Uh, it's gonna take time for our foundational type of revenue structure, the, you know, economic development to occur, because you gotta get a lot of different pieces aligned. Um, just even, you're gonna talk about our capital projects earlier. Those, um, uh, national and statewide economic trends affect investors and banks to trying to fund new projects. It's gonna be, you know, it's gonna take some time, but we'll make investments into active economic development and recruitment activities. Um, also we shifted from that revenue challenge to the expenditure challenge. And so that comes with a lot of different things that we already talked about. Uh, reevaluate our, and prioritize our core services, adjust level of service standards. Um, and again, shifting focus to repair and maintenance and away from new projects and expansion. Cause we've been growing quite a bit over the years and now we're just catching up. And we're a little bit behind because we have a lot of new facilities come on, but now they're starting to age. A good example of that is our sidewalk, uh, uh, maintenance program. We have dollars in there to continue to work on making repairs on a, uh, priority basis. But we also added additional dollars to, you know, implement our sidewalk painting program too. So trying to keep up with those type of things, uh, cause it also, in addition to facility, uh, conditions, it's also, you know, again, we wanna make sure it's where safe as possible in the community.
Okay, so now onto.
Okay, four quick questions, cause I think we've heard a lot of feedback from council already. And then I'll wrap up with the kind of announcement of the rest of the schedule of our budget. So first question is, you know, does the council support the very limited expansion of the workforce? Uh, two potential positions for utility projects, as well as utility billing and then the stormwater position.
Yeah, seemed to save our budget this year.
Could I make a comment? Just, uh, correct some information from earlier. We didn't, we haven't hired a new stormwater journey level maintenance tech since I've been here. Um, I think the positions you're thinking of are a couple of engineering tech positions that serve as, um, to satisfy. The Department of Ecology's increasing requirements for reporting those. So they're stormwater related, but this is a field position. And, uh, the last time, actually in two thousand nineteen, we added a sweeper position. We got, uh, grant funding from the Department of Ecology for a sweeper and a, and a sweeper operator. But, so I just wanted to clarify, yeah, we haven't hired a, a new journey level maintenance tech in a long time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Okay, this is the question about, uh, supporting the one percent increase council authority inflation is, depending on which factor you look at. If it goes about two point three, two point five.
Yes, bring it.
Thank you. Um, this is just a question about, um, using reserves to balance the budget. We have three million available. Right now the gap is two point seven. Um, that'll allow us time to really, um, implement some of the strategies, um. That'll allow us time to really, um, implement some of the strategies, um, really just to.
As a place, as a placeholder, it obviously makes sense to.
But you also think you've got, what was it, 1.7 going back into that reserve too? So, you know, really, it's more closer to 5.
And we'll probably have savings in '26 as well.
Yeah, that will roll over.
And, and projected, and then also we're continuing to work with council on what type of revenue, uh, strategies to incorporate as well, and that can, that's not included in that.
Yeah, none of those include the revenue enhancement.
Well, last question is just, you know, we want to check in with council, have probably a little more robust conversation about reserves and potential shift of priorities. I have listed here on the screen the parties as we've known them for the last few years, but again, we would, um, welcome, you know, more robust conversations, maybe a couple work sessions as we get towards year end.
The, the only thing I want to say about this strategic economic development investments is, you know, I pushed many, many years ago for us to have a economic development fund, and my idea was that, was this, we're gonna use those dollars to go out and help spur more economic development in our communities. For many years, we just sort of rolled those dollars over, we used them here and there sporadically. We've used them for the, the, the Makerspace, which is a, a great asset, you know, but, um, they haven't really been used in what I thought we'd use. It's, it's find, you know, strategic investments in our community that would spur on more economic development that will hopefully increase. And, and we just haven't, we haven't seen that, right? Now I kept on hearing, oh, we're gonna have more projects, or, you know, we would defi things, but we, we just, we've just never done it. You know, and so, it, here, and it's been 10 years, I mean?
It hasn't been that long, but it's, it's, it's been a while, and, and, uh, the, and it is, it's been, you know, a project here and there, and, uh, to be honest, it hasn't been a, a full-force effort. We've talked about over the last year, we had some ideas that Community Economic Development brought to the table. We also now have, uh, in process due to complete this year, rolling in the comp plan update, as well as the end of this budget, a five-year economic development strategy, which will also reinforce how we can use those dollars, um, as, as, uh, moving forward. You know, Councilor Vasquez has a question. But it, it is, we'll have more of a clear strategy that council say, hey, we want to start with this, or this, and then be more proactive in those dollars.
Right? I was just gonna mention, I think the Makerspace is actually a simple investment that has spurred additional economic growth. I like, I, I don't want us to gloss over or bypass that, I think that's a tremendous investment. I know Mayor, you, you mentioned it, but it's, that is an incubator of future development and economic activity in my see. But I also think that we should take to heart what Troy said about refocusing our financial sort of attention and priorities on preserving the infrastructure and the things that we have, instead of looking for new initiatives or new places to devote additional funds. So I'm, I'm a little leery of us creating a new fund for, like, economic development until we focus on preserving some of the failing infrastructure that we have.
My, my point was, you know, it was 10 years ago, um, we, we did add this economic, $2.5 million in economic development reserve, investment, that we thought, well, I pictured at the time was every year we're gonna figure out how we draw that down, spur on economic development, the new economic development, hopefully over time we replenish it, and we keep going. Because, you know, as the three-pronged approach here is, obviously, we have to look at maintenance and operation and, and, you know, pres, preservation, all that stuff, but that, we have to continue to grow. That's the, that, at the end of the day, unless we continue to grow and attract more economic development, we will never keep up with any of this. We're so dependent on economic development to, to fund our general fund. It, it, it's not gonna happen on the property tax side, that goes 1% every year. So you have to find it on the economic development side, period, end of, end of story. And so that's why, you know, the idea was, what can we do to help spur that along? So we can increase that and make strategic investments, so we can see a return on investment.
Something about what Councilor Stedman has his hand up first.
Councilor Stedman?
Yeah, eh, thank you, Mayor, thanks, Rick. You know, my, my, my line of thought here is, we have to take care of our, um, infrastructure first, so those positions. Yes, of course, we have to maintain the stuff we built with one-time monies, but going forward, we as a council have to have a hard discussion about hiring fees or something with these numbers until we get things under, under control, you know? It's, it's, no one wants to pay it, but that's where we're at.
So, um, thank you, council, thank you, Mayor, because that's one of the things too, we get focused on maintaining some of the funds we have, but we also have to be strategic and invest in some things, and that's where the economic funds come in, the strategic investment funds come in. Because if we don't do some of these efforts to spur that, or incentivize or recruit economic development, it won't happen. Even if we do it today, it's still gonna take some time.
Takes some time, yeah.
So in this budget proposal, right now, there's about $800,000 of the strategic investment fund, uh, that's being applied to some of these efforts. So there's $200,000 for the Makerspace, uh, $50,000 for the, uh, food market, food truck market, um, then the, um, the annexation study. That's kind of looking at that long-term growth, if it continues to go. There's another, um, you know, million and a half, two million that we can look at. That's where we kind of take that longer-term approach of, what do we want to use that money? Because we want to make sure we use it wisely, so that, since it is reserves, that we were making something that can return investment, so we can continue to reinvest. And so that's that longer strategy that we need to work with council on. And I think it'll be very informed by the five-year strategic plan that's being developed right now with Community Economic Development and our consultant Eco Northwest.
Okay, so next steps?
Okay, real quick, schedule events. October 21st is our annual city manager budget presentation. On the 28th, we'll have a discussion about utility rates, specifically stormwater, talk about property tax, and if there's any other general budget discussion that might be needed. On October 4th, we'll conduct our first hearing, that is the revenue hearing. On the 18th, we'll have a public hearing on just the general budget. Council also consider the actions needed to set next year's property tax, as well as consider the stormwater rate ordinance. On December 2nd, we'll conduct our final budget hearing, and on the 16th, you are scheduled to consider the '26 budget ordinance.
Just one quick clarification, thanks to Alyssa, the November 4th pending council action on future amendments to the policy may be the number, Monday, November 3rd. The November 4th be a, a general election day.
That's right.
So we, are we officially saying now we're gonna meet on the 3rd instead of the 4th?
Well, we're, uh, gonna be, I think it's in October that we're bringing the council proposed amendments to the council policies procedures to, uh, address the issue of council meetings that are on general elections or holidays. Because we also have November 11th, it's Veterans Day, it's a Tuesday and a holiday.
I mean, we don't have to change the policy to change one day. I, we should change the policy, but if we don't get the forever council policy changed?
Either, either way, it'll be, we'll be doing that, because we can always do a, reschedule a special meeting notice, but we're gonna, we're bringing the policy forward, you're correct, Councilor Vasquez.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, well, I know we have, um, a long ways to go between now and adoption of our budget. And, uh, numbers are gonna change, things are gonna change, we'll have new information. There's obviously some, some outstanding information. We, we don't know that could have a, a major impact one way or the other, so, um, we'll just go through the process like we always do, and we'll, we'll make smart decisions like this council always has in the past. I, I have no doubt about that. Okay, thanks to you, everyone, appreciate it. So we've reached the end of our work session agenda without objection. I will call this work session adjourned, and you keep classy, lazy.
I just reached into urgent one more thing.